Welcome to the February 23rd, 2021 Planning Commission Meeting. I'd like to ask for patience as we continue to conduct virtual meetings. There may be slight delays as we transition between speakers, presentations, and participants. If any participants have issues with technology, please send a message to the moderator, Ray. We have eight discussion items on our agenda today and two committee reports. Four items listed under Old Business have already been received, have already received staff and applicant presentations. I would ask that we focus our discussion on the outstanding issues for these four items. We should focus on resolving identified outstanding issues and be as efficient as possible with our time. I would ask the Commission to hold all questions until the conclusion of all presentations and any public comments. Finally, please be recognized by the chairperson before speaking. With a full agenda of discussion items today, I would ask everyone to be efficient with their time so we can discuss all items. I acknowledge that members of the public may feel as if they do not have sufficient time to speak, but please note that comment may be submitted by email and there will be additional opportunities to speak at the public hearing which would be scheduled for all the rezoning cases by city council. We start every meeting with the opportunity for the public to comment on issues not related to any item on the agenda. No one has signed up for public comment today. Moving on to the Consent Agenda. A Consent Agenda is a list of requests that can be acted upon in one motion. Approval of the Consent Agenda does not signify the final disposition of any one item. There are two items on the Consent Agenda: one rezoning request and one text change. The zoning case is appearing to begin the 90-day review clock and will appear on a future agenda. The text change will be referred to the Text Change Committee. With that, I would ask for a motion to approve the items on the Consent Agenda. Commissioner Hicks?
I move approval for the items on the Consent Agenda.
And it looks like we have a second from Commissioner Miller. Excellent. Commissioner Hicks has offered a motion to approve. Commissioner Miller has seconded the motion. Because this is not a final vote, I will ask for a show of hands from all who support the motion. All right, we have unanimous approval. The motion to approve the Consent Agenda passes. Now we'll move on to the committee reports. I will give a summary briefly. Strategic Planning Committee met last week and discussed the topic of historically Black communities in Raleigh. The committee heard a presentation from Carmen Coffin, which is included in our backup material. There's no formal action for the Planning Commission today, and this is being presented as an informational item. The Text Change Committee discussed TC 1620, which would alter the regulations related to development within the floodplain. The committee requests a 60-day extension to continue the discussion. I'd like to make a motion to accept the recommendation of the Text Change Committee with a request for the time extension for TC 1620. Is there a second? I see a second from Commissioner McIntosh. With a motion and a second, I will ask Chanita for a roll call of the vote.
Good morning. Commissioner Bennett, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair Fox?
Aye.
Commissioner Hicks?
Aye.
Commissioner Lappman?
Aye.
Commissioner McIntosh?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Haver?
Aye.
And Commissioner Winters?
All right, the motion passes unanimously. Moving on to Old Business. These are requests that have appeared on a previous Planning Commission agenda and have received presentations and public comment. As a reminder, I would ask that the Commission focus discussion on the outstanding issues for each item. There are four items listed under Old Business today. Starting with item E.1, that's case number Z 2320. This is a request to rezone approximately one acre of land from downtown mixed-use seven-storied urban general to downtown mixed-use forty-storied urban general conditional use. This request was last discussed at the January 26th Planning Commission meeting, where the applicant was asked to consider revised conditions. The applicant has submitted revised conditions related to building materials, parking deck screening, and lighting. I would like to ask Matt Clem to provide us with an update on the revised conditions.
Good morning Chair Fox and Planning Commission. Chair Fox, you covered it pretty well. I will add to that. Your deadline for action is March 8th, and today's meeting is the last meeting in that review period for you to take action. So you would either today need to make a recommendation for approval or denial or request an extension. If we go on to the next slide, we'll see the conditions. These three conditions you reviewed at the last meeting, next slide. And these are the conditions that were added following your meeting. So condition number four specifies building materials for the project or any future building on the site. Condition five provides some regulation for opaque screening of parking structures on the side of a structure facing East Morgan Street. And the final condition requires design to reduce light spillage. We have Lee Stevens with the Urban Design Center on the call. The Urban Design Center has recently done some work on parking deck screening and last week presented their findings to the city council. So we had some collaboration with the Urban Design Center on these conditions. And they can ask, or excuse me, they can answer more specific questions if you have them. But they've reviewed these and feel it's pretty consistent with the work that they've been doing. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
We've previously heard from the applicant. If the Commission wants to hear another presentation, we would need to vote to grant additional time to the applicant. So at that point, I'm going to pull back to the table and allow planning commissioners to ask questions or clarifications of staff or the applicant related to the new conditions. Do we have any questions for the applicant or staff related to the new conditions? Okay, seeing none, I'd like to entertain a motion. Commissioner McIntosh? I don't believe we can hear you.
Thank you. I move to recommend approval of rezoning case Z 2320. The rezoning request is reasonable and in the public interest because it increases the housing supply in the area and increases development intensity in an area with high-quality transit access.
Excellent. We have a motion on the table. Do we have a second? Commissioner Hicks?
I second the motion.
Excellent. Do we have any more discussion on the merits of the motion? Commissioner Miller?
Can I add a friendly amendment just to say that this rezoning request is consistent with the comp plan?
Excellent, thank you. Okay, we have a motion on the table from Commissioner McIntosh with the friendly amendment by Commissioner Miller and a second by Commissioner Hicks. I'd ask Chanita for a roll call of the vote.
Commissioner Bennett, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair Fox?
Aye.
Commissioner Hicks?
Aye.
Commissioner Lappman?
Aye.
Commissioner McIntosh?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Haver?
Sorry, aye.
And Commissioner Winters?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously. All right. Moving on to item E.2, that's case number Z 4820. This is a request to rezone approximately one-half acre of land from residential ten, office mixed-use three stories detached and neighborhood mixed-use three stories detached conditional use to residential mixed-use three stories urban limited conditional use. This request was discussed at our last meeting, where we received a staff presentation and an applicant presentation. The Commission asked the applicant to revise, to consider revised conditions related to how the development would fit in with the adjacent National Registered Historic District. The applicant has offered some revised condition relating to building materials. Ira Mabel is present on behalf of staff and can provide a brief update.
Hello, good morning, Commissioners. So thank you for that recap. Yeah, there were, there were two things that we were expecting to happen when last you saw this case. The first was some conditions about the character, and the second was a final vote from the Raleigh Historic Development Commission, which did happen. And they voted eight to two to recommend approval with some provisions which I'll share when we get there. Just a reminder, the site is the Bloodworth Street and Cabarrus. So the new conditions, these are not verbatim, but summarized in the green there. So they did, they did add a condition limiting the siding materials that are allowed and specified that no more than half of the facade shall consist of metal terracotta and glass, which in the estimation of the Historic Development Commission was, were the most, or the materials that fit the district the least. The other two conditions were already part of the case, but the applicant has tweaked them, basically modeling some other language from some recent cases that offered similar things. So providing photography and drawings to staff for any demolition, and then some tweaks about the language of who, who can, how the advertising. You might remember they're going to advertise that the homes are available for moving. So to whom and for how long, so just some tweaks of how that condition's going to work. But really, the primary change there is the building material. So still consistent with the Futural Use Map and with the comprehensive plan. The RHDC recommended approval, and we have staff if you have further questions, but recommended approval provided that two things were to happen, that like I say, the mid-facades were not predominantly metal terracotta or glass, which is included now, and that full drawings were provided to staff, which is also included. And your deadline for action is basically today because there are no more meetings before March 8th. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Excellent. We've previously heard from the applicant and the public on this matter. I do not believe anyone is signed up to speak on this issue today. We want to hear from the applicant again. We would need to vote to grant additional time. Do I see interest in opening up to speakers again? Okay, seeing none. I'd like to pull this one back to the table and offer an opportunity for commissioners to ask questions about the new conditions or any clarifications. Commissioner Winters?
Thank you. My questions, I have, I have two. To get clarity, Ira, you said that the material, they were the least consistent. I just want clarity on what you said about that as it relates to the historic commission.
Yep, so there's, there's some building materials that are more prevalent throughout the district. So the, the type of sightings that currently exist and were described in the the narrative essay on the historic district application. And so there is just not a lot of terracotta, for example, that already exists. So the RHDC just wanted on the houses, which they felt would be incongruous with the existing construction.
And that's, to go back, did your presentation say that it was less than 50% that would have those, that material?
Right, that's right. The combination of the three that were singled out as not being historic.
Okay, and my follow-up question was about the new timeline. I saw that there was a 60-day change to advertise and then an additional 15 to allow the removal of the structures. And I saw that the City of Raleigh Museum was struck from the record. So what does that mean? It's open to anyone to come and claim?
Yeah. Yeah, so the 15 days is removal for any artifacts, non-movable of the house. And they changed that before it had said City of Raleigh Museum, and now it says like any nonprofit or other person, including but not limited to the City of Raleigh Museum, et cetera, et cetera, so.
Okay, that wasn't clear. I didn't know if the City of Raleigh Museum did not want the artifacts. I just needed clarity on that. That's where it went.
They're just now, yeah.
Commissioner Bennett?
Thank you Chair Fox. I have a couple of questions. My first question is more a general one for staff. And I'm trying to make sure I have understanding around how overall consistency is determined. Because with this one, for example, there, there's a list of consistent policies. There's a list of inconsistent policies, but the case is considered consistent overall. We have another one that we're going to see later that has the same situation, but the case is considered inconsistent overall. I'd just like a little bit of guidance in terms of how you determine overall consistency when you have several in each box. Are they weighted differently?
So this is Ira. I mean, I can speak for myself. I'll say, you know, at the end of the day, consistency is the determination of the the case planner who's writing the staff report. We do, often if there's some case that's, you know, borderline in our opinion, we do seek other opinions. And our supervisor usually reads every, reads every staff report and will offer feedback. So you're, you're not wrong. I mean, there, it's very common for cases to have both consistent and inconsistent policies. So I mean, in my personal opinion, it does come down to context. And so how how inconsistent is a case with a given policy, the intent of the policy and the wording of the policy? I think in real life, you know, there is, cases exist on a spectrum of consistent with the plan to inconsistent. But the, the way the staff report is, the, the consistent trigger is really like an on-off switch. So there is some, some gray area in the middle. So there is some, some gray area in the middle where there is judgment, professional judgment about, you know, how well does it comply with the vision themes, you know, all the other, all the other parts of the staff report that we walk through to sort of firm up our thinking of a case. And then some things definitely are weighted more heavily, so the future lease map is a pretty strong one. Once you're inconsistent with that, I think it takes a lot more weight than any other individual policy on its own.
Okay, okay, thank you. My second question is, I noticed that RHDC voted eight to two, I'm curious as about the two that weren't in favor, what were their reasons?
I think I'd let the historic preservation staff, if I can complete Colette perhaps?
Hello, this is Colette, I am trying to think back all the way to last week as to exactly why the two did not vote in favor. I believe that at least one of them was interested in more compatibility included in the conditions, and there were discussions about other conditions that some of the members would have liked to have seen that both staff and the applicants didn't think would be enforceable or possible. So I think that that was where some of the resistance to vote affirmatively came from.
Okay, thank you.
Did I see an additional question from Commissioner Hicks?
Yes, thank you, Chair Fox. Just to clarify a couple of clarifications, the condition permitting with the permitted materials, in the presentation, it said limiting certain materials to 50%, but in the staff report, I don't see that language, and so I just wanted to clarify if that was due to our staff report in terms of conditions.
Yes ma'am, so the, the, that change to that condition was submitted after the deadline for public, publicizing the agenda, but was in, in my estimation, technical and non-sustained, which is something that, that staff can accept. So I do have the, those conditions that represented in the presentation, which would be the official conditions that can be approved by city council. But there was just a, there's a quirk of the timing for when the, when the agenda gets published.
Okay, in, in my opinion, I, I feel like that's an important revision of the condition, so I wanted to point that out, I'm, I'm not really sure procedurally on that. Additionally, I think that in the RHDC memo, they suggested that the drawings that I think are a revised condition to our report, that those drawings be measured drawings and not just drawings, and I think that's a really, really important distinction in documenting existing structures in a way that's thorough. So I would ask if the applicant would be willing to add measured drawings rather than just drawings?
So the, the, the drawings that were on the, that's a summary on the slide, the actual language is a dimensioned floor plan sketch, if that provides any clarity.
It does, in my, I would prefer to see some vertical dimensions also provided, it's, there's a lot of interpolation that would have to go on to, in order to, in the future, if somebody wanted accurate information of what's there, would be much more difficult to do it after the fact than to do it while it's standing, and I don't think it takes a tremendously long period of time to do that. So I, I guess I would ask if the applicant would be willing to provide also, you know, vertical dimensions as they would relate to general details of the elevations, like fenestration and, and things like that, plate height. And then my last question would be if the applicant would be, I, I very much appreciate that they're permitting materials, you know, that I think, that show that they, they want this to be made with, you know, some substantial materials, but would the applicant also be willing to prohibit certain materials such as the use of vinyl siding or synthetic stuff, stucco or ephes? And those are my questions, thank you.
Is the applicant available to answer any of these questions?
Yes, I, I'm happy to answer the questions. And this is Tom Johnson on behalf of the applicant. We do specifically say no more than 50% of the total shall consist of metal terracotta and/or glass, that's the specific wording from the condition. Also, the condition on materials does not allow those items that Ms. Hicks mentioned, that's not in the list of what's permissible, so we could not use those items. With respect to the, the documentation, you know, we'd be willing to add just measurements of the facade if, or, or even if we take pictures, do something to show the scale, we could actually show the scale in the picture of the, of the, of the dwelling, so we would be willing to do that, and so I'm happy to add that as far as the dimensioned floor sketch, just, just measurements of the vertical part. And then, I'm trying to remember the third question, does that answer your question, Ms. Hicks, or is there, is there another?
No, you covered it.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I covered everything. So yes, we, we, we worked really hard with the Historic Commission and we looked at materials and, and we did not include, because we don't want vinyl siding, we don't want those, you know, we aren't using ephes or any of that, so we did not include that in our list. Thank you.
Thank you, are there any additional questions for staff or the applicant, Commissioner Bennett?
Thank you, the staff report mentioned an existing zoning condition that prevents demolition of the houses and requires structures that are rebuilt to be residential in character. It notes that no similar condition is provided for the new homes that are being constructed. So I guess my question is sort of twofold, is the applicant willing to add some sort of condition? And then, what is the effect of these new townhomes on the historic integrity of the National Registered District? Curious about that.
Again, this is Tom Johnson, you know, the, the, as far as the Historic District, the conditions we've added in here are similar to the same types of conditions that have been approved in the Warehouse District, which is another Historic District, in terms of limiting the materials, so that's what we did to address that, to make sure that it fit, you know, any development would fit in with the character of the, of the Historic District as mentioned by Mr. Mabel earlier. As far as the residential nature, I mean, we're, you know, the, and the intent here is to do townhomes, even under the existing zoning, you could do other things because it was neighborhood mixed use and office mixed use, but our intent is to do residential. And that condition really didn't have anything to do with, it was just an older condition that had nothing to do with really the residential character as much. But this is, what we're provide, proposing is consistent with the surrounding areas and the surrounding development that's occurred, including the, the downtown mixed uses across the road. So that's how we're dealing the residential characters, if we're building residential, we're going to use the materials that are consistent with the district and that have been used previously.
Do we have any additional questions? Commissioner Bennett?
So my concern, and, and thank you to the applicant for, for the response, my concern is that while what is being rebuilt may be compatible in terms of building materials and that type of, of technical aspect with the Historic District, it's not compatible with the essence of the historic neighborhood. You know, the applicant mentioned the Warehouse District, a lot of what I see going on in the Warehouse District is adaptive reuse of structures that are there, not so much structures being torn down. Here, we're tearing down structures and rebuilding structures that sound like they're going to be really nice and compatible with what is going on around the area, but not compatible with what's in that neighborhood. So I don't feel like this is preserving that community, because $500,000 townhomes are not going to attract the people that have been in that community. So I, I feel like it's compatible on the one hand, but is it compatible with the spirit of the community? And it, while I know this is an acceptable way of dealing with historic structures, it just kind of, I, maybe just makes me sad is a good way of explaining it, that we are preserving a lot of these historically black communities through pictures. So what we're preserving is the memory of the communities, while a lot of other communities, we're working really hard to preserve the actual community, and these communities are just disappearing, but we're, we have pictures that you can see of them. I just want to see how we can preserve the actual community.
And, and what I can do to speak to that, and I appreciate Ms. Bennett, what you're, you're saying, you know, what we're doing is, is reasoning to allow for the townhomes, which allows for more density, which is consistent with the comprehensive plan and consistent with the plan for this district. The nice thing about this area though is the city owns property adjoining this, which, you know, is a way to help preserve some of those things you talk about, because they're city-owned property, so the city's going to direct that, and this is directly adjoining this property, is property owned by the city, which I don't know what the plans are, I know there've been discussions between my client and the city about that, and I think the intent is to do something similar to what you're talking about. And the other thing is we have offered to move these homes to another location to preserve them, so, I mean, and that will be, you know, there'll be no charge for the homes, obviously the person who moves them will have to incur the expense to move them, so, you know, that's been offered as well as a way to, to preserve these homes. So I, I appreciate what you're saying, there's some things in this neighborhood though that, that make it a little different than others in terms of the city-owned property.
Thank you.
Are there any additional questions? Commissioner Lampman?
I think what I struggle with is the Raleigh Historic Development Commission's vote. If, if they are charged with preserving or, you know, maintaining the history, and they voted in such great support, I, I just want to, I just want to understand that a little bit better, and then just to, I mean, I know that when, you know, we were looking at converting the church off of New Bern, we did something similar about having pictures there, so I just wanted to, I don't know, get a little bit more clarity, clarity from the Raleigh Historic Development Commission as to why they voted the way they did.
I don't know if, if you'll need to address that or staff would, but basically, it's, this is, even though this is a natural, National Historic District, that's not the authority in the commission to do other requirements in terms of what's developed here, you know, they can give some advisory things, which they did by us changing the, limiting the materials that we use, and documenting, as you mentioned, and the additional thing we're willing to do is have these moved and/or allowing the City of Raleigh Museum or other nonprofits to take materials from the site should someone not decide not, that they aren't interested in moving the homes. But beyond that, this is not a, a local district that would require, you know, approval of the structures themselves, so that's a little different in that regard. So the Historic District Commission did what they have the authority to do in a district such as this. But Colette, I don't know if you want to speak to that any further, I know we had that discussion at the Raleigh Historic District Commission meeting.
I was going to defer to Tanya on this question.
Oh, that's fine.
Question to the moderator, is Tanya available to answer that question?
Yeah, Tanya's here and unmuted, but nothing's coming through.
Okay, we'll give her a second. Commissioner Hicks?
I had a few comments I wanted to make, I could make them now while we're waiting, if you'd like.
Please do so.
So, you know, I think Commissioner Lampman raises an interesting point, you know, about the RHDC vote in support of this case, so I struggle a little bit, I feel like I'm on two sides of a fence simultaneously. When I look at the inconsistent policies, I, you know, they all seem, they relate to the cultural and historic preservation, protecting historic neighborhoods, preserving South Park character, South Park infill, South Park historic preservation, very specific about that specific historic area. And in the RHDC's letter, they say, quote, "They strongly encourages the applicant to do proportional studies of the existing neighborhood fabric to ensure compatibility with the East Raleigh-South Park Historic District." And in the staff report, and maybe this has changed with the revised conditions that weren't in our report, it does say that it's consistent overall with the comprehensive plan, but that the request has a split consistency with regards to the South Park area-specific guidance policy, which I, I, I think are all the inconsistent policies on this case and are important ones. Additionally, the request is inconsistent, inconsistent with policies regarding historic And so those seem like very important factors in this specific setting, and so I take some guidance from those comments, both from the staff report and from RHDC, but then on the flip side of that, you know, we're being told that they supported this case eight to two, so I think that's a really important question. And then one last comment, I do think the proportional studies for compatibility with the South Park Historic District, obviously that's a design element that would happen later in the process, but just wanted to highlight that as being really important, and that I would also, also add that thoughtfully incorporating, honoring the area's history in some visually apparent aspect of the structure could be a compromise to actually losing the structures, understanding that if you're trying to build townhouses, adaptive reuse would be a fairly challenging approach. And so anyway, I wanted to offer that up, I don't know, don't really anticipate seeing them in the form of a condition, although I would love to see that, and that's, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, is there any additional comment or question from the commissioners? Commissioner Winters?
Thank you, my question is a follow-up in terms of the local Historic District, why is it not considered a local Historic District, but it is considered a nationally, a nationally recognized Historic District? What are the variables for it to be considered local? What are the variables for it to be considered local? And then why is it not?
So, um, a local district designation is a fairly involved process that involves a rezoning of the neighborhood. So the national district, which is a honorary designation based on a survey of the historic assets in the area, um, doesn't have any regulatory power. For the city to adopt a local district does, um, does, you know, require that to be mapped as an overlay district on top of it. Um, it's typically involved process. Not only is there a detailed study of the architecture and history of the neighborhood that goes into that, but there's also a significant, significant amount of community outreach. And in my experience, and I think historic staff would back me up, no small level of controversy. Because with the, with the local designation comes, um, not only controls on your neighbor, but controls on you. And basically every modification you make to that house going forward has to go through a certificate of appropriateness, um, review in front of the historic commission. So there's an extra layer of design review and regulation, and a lot of property owners are opposed to that. So typically the, the things that have to align is a historic area on the national register that also meets the standards for a local district where there's significant community buy-in and support, and only a relatively smaller number of, uh, property owners opposed to the designation for that to get through the process and become, uh, mapped over the neighborhood. I can tell you from my own experience in planning in South Park is that there are very mixed feelings in the community about local historic designation when it has been raised as a tool for preserving neighborhood character.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you. Um, I understand, um, Tanya Tully is available to speak for historic preservation?
Hello, Tanya Tully, can you hear me this time?
Yes, ma'am, we can.
Fantastic. Um, uh, thank you, Ken, excellent explanation of that portion of it. Um, as to the question of the Raleigh Historic Development Commission's recommendation on this and some other rezoning cases over the years, the perspective that I've heard them coming from is the, you know, it has to do with that lack of regulatory control and, um, not necessarily having been heard by, um, you know, decision makers over the years and that the opportunity to either have, um, a better design or have recordation of what is, um, you know, could be demolished at any time anyhow is, um, you know, it, it is better than nothing and with the current, um, incentives that are available. I don't, um, so, so that, that is what I've heard, um, from them over the years. I, we can, I will certainly, you know, bring this conversation back to them and let them know what's, uh, what I'm hearing.
So we have a series of policies that have been identified in the staff report as being consistent, a series of policies identified as being inconsistent. Um, previously we heard from members of the public and our previous conversation, um, addressed the ultimate disposition of the houses and concerns relating to one of the speakers who was running a group home from one of the buildings. Our conversation today has covered materials, documentation and recordation of the historic structures, and then concerns about compatibility on a macro level to address the fabric and context of the community. And that may speak to some of the inconsistencies identified from the South Park area-specific guidance. Is there any additional conversation that is required? Okay, we have a couple of options. Commissioner McIntosh?
Um, I guess I'll just repeat, um, a concern I had the last meeting that it, I apologize, I'm not finding a close-up view to verify this, but I'm getting the impression that, um, portions of South Park are, um, on the future land use map are shown as, you know, expected to be, you know, downtown development while, you know, this, so this historically black neighborhood is sort of planned to be, um, developed while historic white neighborhoods in Raleigh like, um, Oakwood, I think are protected by the future land use map as residential, and I'm, I'm troubled by that.
Thank you for your comment. So acknowledging that some of those comments that we've made today would not likely be addressed in conditions, other ones related to the recordation of the buildings could be addressed in conditions. We have the option of moving forward with the case, or we could hold the case. Do I hear any interest in making a motion at this time?
Um, if I may, sorry Chairperson, um, you cannot hold the case, you can request an extension from council, um, because your timeline is, is up.
Thank you for the clarification. Commissioner Bennett?
I, I'm, I'm ready to vote. I'll make a motion.
Please do so.
Okay, bear with me, this is my first one. So I move that, um, case Z forty-eight twenty, South Bloodworth Street be denied. While the case is consistent with the flume and some policies of the comprehensive plan, it is inconsistent with the following policies. HP one point two, cultural and historic resource preservation. HP two point four, protecting historic neighborhoods. HP two point seven, mitigating impacts on historic sites. H one point six, housing preservation. AP SP four, character of South Park infill. AP SP five, South Park historic preservation. Furthermore, denial is reasonable and in the public interest because of its detrimental, because of this case's detrimental impacts on preserving an historically black community and its removal of naturally occurring affordable housing and replacing it with housing that is incompatible with incomes in the neighborhood.
We have a motion and do I see a second? Commissioner Winters?
Second.
Excellent. So we have a motion on the table from Commissioner Bennett. Uh, we have a second from Commissioner Winters. I'd like, I'd like to ask Shanitha for a roll call of the vote.
Commissioner Bennett, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair Fox?
Aye.
Commissioner Hicks?
Aye.
Commissioner Lampman?
Aye.
Commissioner McIntosh?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Nay.
Commissioner O'Haver?
Nay.
And Commissioner Winters?
Aye.
Motion to deny passes six to two. Moving on, item E point three, case number Z fifty twenty. This is a request to rezone approximately three acres of land from residential four to residential ten conditional use. This request was previously placed on the January twelfth Planning Commission agenda and deferred to a later date. The applicant was asked to conduct another neighborhood meeting, which has occurred. The applicant has also revised zoning conditions. At our previous meeting, we had a staff presentation inferred from the applicant and interested parties. The request was deferred to allow the applicant to consider revised zoning conditions. I'd like to ask Jason Harden to provide us with an update on the revised conditions.
So there were some conditions added to this request following the neighborhood meeting. Uh, I would note quickly, the city council granted an extension for planning commission review, and that was primarily to allow for the neighborhood meeting that did take place earlier this month. And so the new deadline for action is March twenty-second. So next slide, please. The three new conditions were added. Previously, the use of outdoor sports or entertainment facility was excluded. The new conditions involve a reduction in the number of residential units. So in the R-ten category, that would permit thirty units on a little bit more than three acres here. The new condition allows no more than twenty-four units. And as with any zoning condition, that becomes officially part of the zoning, um, if approved and cannot be changed, um, except with the, uh, process of the new rezoning. Another condition specifies larger setbacks for, uh, buildings on the site, so not within thirty feet of the east or west property lines. And I have a map on the next slide that'll illustrate that. And then lastly, that there would be fencing along the east and south and west boundaries of the site, minimum six feet tall opaque fence within fifteen feet. And the next slide illustrates the location of those last two conditions. So you can see the thirty feet residential building setback on the east and west sides, and then the fencing on the east, west and south sides. Of course, the north side is, uh, fronting on Pleasant Grove Church Road. Next slide. So again, the request is previously consistent with the comprehensive plan. Uh, the new conditions don't necessarily change anything, still consistent, consistent with the future land use designation for this area, which is moderate density residential, which envisions densities between six and fourteen units per acre and housing types that can include, uh, townhouses or smaller apartment buildings. In this case, with the new condition, the density would be eight units per acre, slightly less. Um, there's no urban form map designation, so again, consistent overall. So that's all that I have. Happy to answer questions. The applicant does some slides and, uh, happy to answer questions anyone has.
Okay, um, previously heard from the applicant and the public on this matter. Staffs identified a number of policies demonstrating consistency with the comprehensive plan as seen in the staff report. Public comment received at our previous meeting, also via email and in the Zoom recordings provided by the applicant, have identified issues related to neighborhood character, traffic, current conditions, loss of tree coverage, existence of a well on the property and overall density. There are a few people, um, at the meeting this morning. If we want to hear from the applicant and the public, uh, we would need to vote to grant additional time. Okay? Seeing nods and a thumbs up, uh, without objection, I'd like to grant an additional, um, three minutes to the applicant and to members of the public. So can we first hear from the applicant?
Yes, uh, good morning, everybody, and, um, thank you for your time and thank you for the additional time to speak. Um, I've prepared a statement, given the, um, short amount of time, um, to, to just be efficient. So I'll just read my statement. Uh, my name is Cliff Menzley, and I'm one of, uh, three participants in this application. Uh, that's the petition for the rezoning. Um, and I read, "We are seeking to solve an issue within the City of Raleigh that's currently being experienced. That challenge is the need and demand for more residential housing. Therefore, we are proposing to construct an inviting, appealing and safe townhome community on the proposed subject property. We've met with the neighbors and community who live within the homes and townhomes that surround the subject site during two different neighborhood meetings to discuss this particular site and our proposed development to hear their concerns. Although we were not able to address every concern of each neighbor to a finite point, we have revised our proposed petition to include conditions to accommodate, to address those concerns. Upon listening to the concerns in the neighborhood, we have committed to doing the following. And I apologize because I recognize this is redundant, but, uh, there were concerns raised of privacy and buffering, and we will be designing the site in such a way that no residential dwelling unit shall be located within thirty feet of the eastern and western boundary lines in the subject property. We are committing to constructing an opaque fence along the western, southern and eastern boundary lines in areas where the fence would not conflict with any tree conservation areas or easements located on the property, subject property at a height of not less than six feet tall. There was concern of density during the course of the neighborhood meetings. There were concerns expressed that our petition would potentially allow for too many residential units. Previously, our petition requested an R-ten zoning classification, which would have allowed for as many as thirty units on this particular site, given the site is comprised of roughly three acres. During the course of conversations with the neighborhood, the neighborhood voiced that the desired density would be limited to eighteen units. Today, we present a petition requesting an R-ten zoning classification with a limitation of twenty-four total residential units. If you were to split the difference between thirty units and eighteen units, you would arrive at twenty-four total residential units. We feel that is the very definition of a compromise in the meeting of parties in the middle. We therefore hope this concession is viewed as a compromise by both parties. Lastly, there were concerns voiced about traffic and safety. To address these concerns, we have reduced the overall number of proposed residential units, which will reduce and mitigate potential traffic generated by the proposed development, which is minimal, given the city staff's report on the projected traffic generated by the proposed development. Further, we understand that the neighborhood, neighborhood has petitioned the city to reduce the speed limit on Pleasant Grove Church Road to twenty-five miles per hour in this area. If we were to become the property owner, we would also like to support this petition, and we're open to other suggestions, including a financial contribution to improve traffic safety in these areas. The last item I would like to point out is this zoning petition is consistent with the Raleigh City Comprehensive Future Land Plan, which calls for moderate density residential. In quoting the plan, I quote, "Gross density in these areas would be six to fourteen units per acre." And I recognize I'll finish up here. Corresponding zoning districts are R-six to R-ten or RX conditioned to limit density. Given we are proposing approximately eight units per acre within the R-ten zoning, our proposed designation falls on the lower half of the City of Raleigh's own designation for the site within the comp plan. I have covered what we believe to be the most commonly voiced concerns. We respectfully request approval of this petition, and I thank you for your time this morning.
Thank you. Uh, moderator, how many members of the public do we have, um, to speak today in opposition? Or are there any members of the public here to speak in support?
I have, uh, six members present. And I'm not in support.
So if we grant, um, if we grant three minutes additionally to opposition, that's a very tight timeline, um, for each of those members of the public to speak. If any members of the public would like to defer their time to another speaker or would like to appoint us to an email that they've already made, um, they can go ahead and do that. Um, and we will start off, uh, with the clock of three minutes, which is what, um, the applicant in support of the project had, uh, which I believe gives twenty-five to thirty seconds per person, um, acknowledging that when we get to the end, we can provide additional time, um, with a, with a vote or a show of hands. Commissioner McIntosh?
I'm wondering if we could provide more time in advance, just to give each person a reasonable amount of time.
Okay. Uh, with a show of hands, we could, we could supply each member of the public with a minute, and we could, we could supply, um, an opportunity for the applicant to respond, so they have a, an adequate amount of time as well. Okay? Let's go ahead and do that. Okay, I got a bunch of thumbs up. Um, so I'm gonna ask that, um, each member of the neighborhood and opposition, um, please limit their comments to a minute. It's most helpful for us if you provide additional information, that's in addition to any of the information that we've covered today or that you've previously made us aware of.
All right, the first speaker is Andrea Winch.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, we can.
Hi, thank you so much. In the interest of time, I will just make a clarifying point. The applicant has said that the reduction to twenty-four units is a compromise. The neighbors would like to stick with R-four zoning. The compromise is R-six. He has gone nowhere near a compromise. The second neighborhood meeting that took place, he came with these conditions already in place without hearing our concerns. I will defer the rest of my time.
Thank you, ma'am.
The next speaker, the next speaker would be, uh, Cameron Boyett.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sure we can.
Uh, thank you for your time. I would, I would like to speak in opposition, uh, to the request for rezoning. I stand with my neighbors, uh, with their concerns on safety, um, mainly around traffic and environmental impact. However, I want to use my time to talk about precedent already established on Pleasant Grove Church. If you're facing the property and you walk right, you will find five pieces of land similar to this. The most similar is a 3.37 acre piece of land that was developed with 14 single-family homes. And the last five have sold between 550,000 and 575,000. In conclusion, I would say that if this particular developer does not see it financially feasible to develop single-family homes, I would argue that feasibility is subjective, especially profit margin. Five recent developers own Pleasant Grove Church have all found it financially feasible to develop land with single-family homes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next is Jenna Schirmer.
I will defer my time. I don't have anything additional to add, but I strongly oppose to all the reasons that were, have already been listed. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Next, we have Meredith Morris.
Can I hear?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, good. I'm sorry, I've got a sick kid and trying to do virtual learning at the same time. I'm in for the opposition. When we had our neighborhood meeting on the night, he chose to do a cap at 26 and we said that was not a compromise on that. We was still, because he was saying that that's a 13% decrease in his profit. He repeatedly kept saying it was not, he would not make any money off of this if he kept doing it any lower. And he, we asked for him to do homes. We wanted 18 homes, but he kept saying it was not feasible for him to do that. We asked to keep this as an R6 as we have had other homes developed, as Rosney is one, Pleasant Creek is one, and Glendower are, all have been developed in the past 15 years. And we have, we have all had contact with this developer and that's an aspect. And they have been very cordial to us. This developer has not, we have a petition going around with over 70 signatures, which I have sent in pictures through an email.
Thank you, ma'am.
The next speaker is Robert Davis, but his audio connection is not connected now. It was working earlier, so I'll move on to Sean Davis if you want to check your audio connection, Robert. So Sean Davis is next.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, we can.
Yes, I live right next door to the property that he's trying to rezon. And during this time and like the two meetings, everybody has said, this developer has pretty much has not listened to none of the neighborhood and has not his concern at all. As to as the well over there, there is a little contamination still over there. And as a well contractor myself and part of the North Carolina Groundwater Association along with Deaner, we are concerned about it. We feel like this developer has not developed anything in Raleigh, will not do what's right and because it's going to cost into his profit. He kept saying his noted and his profit is profit. This is a type of developer that I deal with every day with developers in my line of work. We don't want this developer in this city developing. He is just not, he's all about profit. It's all about profitability, not affordable housing. He just wants to make his profit and that's it. And he, and his, because he said his profit was for his livability and his livelihood. What about us that's lived in the neighborhood? Where's our neighborhood rights that we've lived in there for 30 years? Where's our rights? And with this developer, we gotta live with it for the rest of our lives, not him. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
I don't know if that was. I'm trying to call Robert to connect to his phone real quick.
Are there any additional speakers we could move on to?
He is the last one.
Okay.
Connected. Robert, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. I had to switch.
Yes, sir. Go, yes, sir, go ahead.
Okay, I, I sent in an email and gave a brief statements of what happened during the neighborhood meeting. And again, the entire neighborhood is against an R4 to R10 rezoning. The point that I wanted to really hit on is that this is not rezoning for affordable housing. This is rezoning, which is really called spot zoning for profitability. And this was proven in the neighborhood meeting from not wanting to compromise the neighborhood it has for an R6 at least rather than R10, which would be more compatible to the characteristics of the neighborhood. The developer quickly objected and his only point was that he could not make a profit and his business is profitability. So, you know, I appreciate giving the time to speak and I ask the planning commission, all commissioners, to please do not approve the rezoning from R4 to R10 for this neighborhood. Also, thanks to Commissioner Hicks for responding to my email and the concerns of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Do we have any additional speakers, Ray?
That's all we have in opposition. I've been asked if Eddie Bland can speak in support.
Without any opposition from the commissioners, I'd like to allow a minute or additional members of the public to speak in support. Okay?
Eddie, you're up.
Yes, sir, you can hear me.
Yes, sir, we can.
Sure, thank you. My name's Eddie Bland and I'm a local real estate broker and president of my company, Trust Realty and Asset Management, Inc. I represent the seller, Mary Jane Polygonus, who's president of her LLC, MJP Visions Realty. For personal and private health reasons, Mary Jane asked that I read a statement on her behalf this morning to the commissioners. The subject property has been the home place for Mary Jane's family, for her mother and grandmother for a very long time, since the early 1900s. Sadly, the home place that once occupied this, her grandmother and, and mother was burned in 2018 and was a total loss. The family decided at that point to go ahead and clear the property of the remains and sell the property. Mary Jane and I solicited offers from prospective buyers, but ultimately, Mary Jane decided that the development group comprised of this applicant would be the best stewards of her family property instead of an out-of-town or national builder. Mary Jane feels it's relevant to mention that this development partnership was selected because there are local developers and part of the Raleigh community. While Mary Jane is cognizant of the concern.
Excuse me, sir, your time has run up unless.
I thought I had two minutes, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it was one minute, but if members of the commission would like to allow.
I'd just like another 45 seconds would be great.
All right, you have an additional 45 seconds. Thank you, sir.
Although not all the neighbor concerns have been addressed, the applicant has made considerable reasonable concessions to help alleviate their concerns. The developer's requesting a zoning that is consistent with the current city of Raleigh's future land use program. Mary Jane asks that the planning commission recognize that her family has lived in the community longer than others that surround the site. She recognizes and remembers when the homes of the neighbors were constructed, creating the community in which the family lived. She asked that the neighbors and planning commission recognize this fact and that she too should have the opportunity to realize the benefit of the family's land and legacy. In conclusion, Mary Jane Polygonus and I respectfully request that the planning commissioners approve the rezoning request. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. So seeing as we have no other members of the public here to speak, do we have any questions from the commissioners of staff or the applicant? Commissioner Winters?
Thank you. It was just one clarification. A caller mentioned contamination, like well water contamination. I remember something being said about it in our previous conversation or in our last time we heard this, I just want clarity as to what that was, if it has been resolved or if it's still an issue from staff.
So there was discussion about this last week. Evidently, there, and there's no public record of this, but evidently during the process of evaluating the property, the buyer's process, it was realized that there were some pre-existing conditions on the site. And from the staff's perspective or the perspective of a rezoning, that would need to be, if there is in fact an issue that needs to be addressed, that would need to be addressed, regardless of whether the property is rezoned or not. And the applicant may have some additional information or the property owner's representatives about the current conditions on the site.
Would the applicant like to speak to the existence of the well?
Yes, good morning again. This is Cliff Minsley. During the initial due diligence, it became, we became aware of an underground storage tank, which does have a propensity for leaking and it did in fact come to, we, we came to understand that the tank had leaked. So we consulted with Mary Jane and Eddie and they elected to remediate the site. So they hired a licensed and certified consultant to do so, which extracted the tank and the contaminated soil, which was verified by a lab. That report was provided to the state of North Carolina and the state of North Carolina issued to the property owner a no further action letter certifying that the remediation was completed to the satisfaction of the state of North Carolina. We'd be happy to provide that. There was also mention of a well. There is a well on site and I think the, I won't speak for the neighbors, but I believe that the concern is that that well would be contaminated. The consultant has assured us that is not the case, given the report, but given that this would be a property that would be seeking utilities from the city of Raleigh, that well will, would be abandoned by a certified professional in the course of the development.
Thank you for that. Commissioner Lantman, do you have a question?
So I know that removing a storage tank is very pricey endeavor. I've had quotes $200,000 to do that, so it sounds like the property owner bore that expense. I'd like to learn a little bit more as to why R6 is just not appropriate for the site. It seems to be that it would be, you know, more fluid with the current area, but I just don't understand why R6 is not an option.
Sure, I'd be happy to respond to that. So our development proposal is for townhomes as the product that we are proposing. R6 does not permit townhome development. The zoning that we are seeking is R10 because it allows for townhomes, which is what we are seeking to develop on the property. But I'd point out that the density that we're proposing is more in line if there were, say, an R8 classification, given that the site is three acres, we are committing to building no more than 24 townhome units. And I might also add that there are actual townhomes that surround the site on the western, the southern and the eastern side. And so we believe that when we approached the site, we were looking at a site that would be compatible with other product that surrounds it, those being townhomes. And although those townhomes are located, I believe in an R6 zoning, they predate the current R6 zoning, which no longer allows townhomes.
Thank you. Commissioner Miller?
I had a question for staff. In the presentation, I just want to make sure that I have this right. The presentation shows, now I'm trying to click back over to it, on one of the slides comparing the existing zoning to the proposed zoning, that the maximum number of units at the existing is 12 and the proposed is 30. Given the new condition limiting development to 24 units, should that be 24 instead?
That's correct. It should be 24.
Great. And then with respect to these additional conditions that are offered by the applicant, I note in the staff report that it says that there were no, that this was, this was consistent with the comp plan and that there were no inconsistent policies cited. After these amendments or the conditions have been offered, is, is that still consistent that there are no policies that, with which the zoning case is inconsistent?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Jason, while you're on the line, I have one question for you as well. I had submitted a question via email, wanted to find out, if we zoom out a little bit, what the impact from a density standpoint would be for this particular case if it was approved? So the aggregate density of what I'll call the entirety of that block, do we have a number of roughly what that is?
Yes, if, if you look at that block in terms of the larger block in between roughly Millbrook and Pleasant Grove Church, then, and if you exclude, there are just a few properties that don't have residential uses, church, for instance. If you exclude those, the overall density and given that there are existing townhomes that are slightly denser to the south and to the southwest of the site, it works out to roughly 6.9 units per acre. And then if you factor in this piece of property and assume a density there of the eight units per acre, then it raises the overall density very slightly to 7.0 units per acre.
Thank you for that. Do we have any additional questions for the applicant or for staff? Commissioner Bennett?
Thank you. If it's not too much trouble for staff, can you pull up the map that shows this case again and just point out where the other townhomes are?
Yes, while they're pulling up the slide, I think it's the second or third slide. In fact, Eric, can you go to the slide that shows the zoning? I think it's a little more clear from that. Right, so in this slide, you can see the, the subject property on the south side of Pleasant Grove Church. So everything that is zoned R6 to the south is townhouses. So that's obviously the south side of the property in question and also portions of the east and west sides of the property are adjacent to townhouses.
Thank you, that's helpful.
Thank you. Can we undo the share at this point so I can see lovely faces? Thank you very much. Okay. To summarize at a high level, we've heard from the staff and from members of the public, the primary comment that seems to be repeated is related to density. We've seen additional conditions related to, to the buffering to address some of the previous concerns identified. If there are no further questions, I'd like to entertain a motion. Commissioner O'Haver?
I'd like to make a motion. I would move to recommend approval of rezoning case Z5020. I think the additional conditions offered, the reductions of units, I think the development pattern in this area is compatible. And I believe the rezoning request is reasonable in the public interest because it's supported by these specific policies. LU 1.2, future land use, excuse me, land use map and zoning consistency. LU 2.2, compact development. LU 8.10, infill development. H 1.8 zoning for housing. LU 1.2, future land use, excuse me, land use map and zoning consistency. LU 2.2, compact development. LU 8.10, infill development. H 1.8 zoning for housing.
Do I have a second? Commissioner Miller?
Second.
Thank you. The motion from Commissioner O'Haver and a second from Commissioner Miller. Is there any additional conversation on the merits of the motion? Seeing none, I'd like to ask Shanitha for a roll call of the vote.
Commissioner Bennett, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair Fox?
Aye.
Commissioner Hicks?
Aye.
Commissioner Lantman?
Aye.
Commissioner McIntosh?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Haver? And Commissioner Winters?
Aye.
Thank you.
The motion passes unanimously. Okay, moving on to item E.4, which is case number Z6120. This is a request to rezone approximately 11 acres of land from industrial mixed-use three stories to residential mixed-use four stories conditional use. The commission discussed this request at the last meeting where the applicant was asked to consider revised conditions. The applicant has offered revised conditions related to building materials. Sarah Ellis is here on behalf of the staff and she can provide a brief update on the request.
Good morning. Thank you very much. Yep, so you had seen this previously at the last meeting. This is a request to rezone just under 11 acres of land off of Atlantic Avenue in Pacific. And I just, I wanted to point out one clarification that we spoke a little bit last time about what RX designation means and I just wanted to speak to that designation. So while it's called residential mixed-use, it's a category that actually allows for a fairly small amount of mixed-use that it limits it to no more than 4,000 square feet at the corner of two intersections, which this property is, so it would be eligible to have some small retail component. But by virtue of that designation, that retail component would be limited to no more than 4,000 square feet. So just wanted to mention that because I know we had some discussion about what residential mixed-use would permit. And I'm ready to go to the next slide whenever you are, Ira. Yeah, so again, just a brief overview of where we are looking. It's just south of the intersection of Millbrook and Atlantic Avenue. It's sort of a variety of uses surrounding this parcel. Next slide, please. And here is the update that Chairperson Fox mentioned. So the new condition that was submitted is a condition regulating exterior materials and prohibiting vinyl siding. Next slide, please. And again, this is just sort of a brief overview. You have seen this before, but essentially what the request is seeking to do is it would increase the residential entitlement permitted on the site. And if you go to the next slide, it also shows that the request is decreasing the amount of office and retail usage. And again, as I had mentioned before, that 4,000 square foot cap is by virtue of the RX zoning district, that it caps those uses of that amount of space. Next slide, please. Again, the request is consistent with the future land use map designation. And I'll point out, I know this, while they are requesting to go to RX and generally office and residential mixed-use contemplates OX zoning districts, the request is less intense than what would be permitted if they were asking to go to OX. So it is still consistent as the comp plan would interpret it. Next slide, please. Again, just a summary of policies. You had seen these previously, but generally speaking, what this request is doing is asking to increase the housing supply in the area. And it's generally consistent with these policies related to that as well as a limited amount of retail use in industrial zones as it limits the retail use. Next slide, please. The only inconsistent policy is related to commercial uses in industrial zones. And I know there was some discussion about policy consistency earlier. And I'd just like to say, the comp plan sort of tugs at a variety of policies. And I think that that goal is to seek, it applies broad guidance, but sometimes those policies tug at one another. So you can be consistent with some of them, but not consistent with others. And it would be very difficult to be consistent with all. So what this is simply saying is that industrial areas should be preserved as industrial and it's sort of looking to preserve that. This request would reduce the amount of industrial and that's why it's inconsistent. Next slide, please. Deadline fraction is April 12, 2021. The applicant had submitted a new presentation, but I'm here and happy to answer any questions that the commission has. Thank you.
So we have previously heard from the applicant on this matter and no one from the public is signed up to speak on this issue. Do members of the commission have any questions for the applicant or for staff? Seeing none, oh, Commissioner McIntosh?
I'm just curious. I feel like we don't have a lot of information on this other than the density it's going to be and it's a residential development in the middle of an industrial area. But I was noticing, just comparing, we've got another case later today that is also redevelopment of an industrial area next to the railroad tracks. And in that location, there's a 40-foot wide buffer yard of mature trees on both sides of the track to reduce potential of pedestrians attempting to cross the tracks and make it safer potentially for children who might live next door. And I'm just wondering, is there, is there any buffering offered here for the railroad tracks to protect residents of this apartment complex?
There's not been a condition offered by the applicant that would speak to that.
I'd like to have the applicant respond to that if possible.
Hi, good morning. This is Molly Stewart, Morning Star Law Group. I do have with me Ken Thompson from J. Davis Architects, as well as Greg Leesman from the applicant in case there are additional questions for those. I did want to zero right in on Commissioner McIntosh's question, however. I wonder if we could go to my sixth slide in the presentation I submitted? This is where we get to the railroad question. Thank you. So I just wanted to provide some comparison. There is kind of an inherent, there's a 100-foot required setback from the railroad track. And to show you what that looks like on our site, I want to compare it with some other sites. So this is a downtown property, you see North Blunt Street there over on the right. Next slide, please. The blue line represents that 100 feet. So just for comparison, that's kind of where those are sitting. Next slide. We heard concern last time that this would perhaps be an undesirable place to live. This is a picture of that neighborhood. It's quite desirable as far as I can tell. It seems like a nice place to live. Next slide, please. There are two other similar neighborhoods along the same track. These are all on the same track. And I just wanted to quickly go through those. Next slide, please. That's again, 100 feet off the track, the blue line. Again, a very nice neighborhood. Next slide, please. And the third neighborhood, again, there's that 100-foot line. Next slide. And another nice neighborhood. Next slide, please. So here's how that 100-foot compares with our site. We've got sort of a, not only that built-in 100-foot setback, but also there's a notch in the property that eats at most of it. And so we feel that, you know, although we are looking for flexibility of design, you know, it's something where we have to be able to market this property. And so this is going to be something that is sort of otherwise controlled. And there's no reason that with this kind of distance, we couldn't make very nice housing that distance from the railroad.
Thank you for showing the buffering distance. I appreciate that. I guess I have to say, of course, this case is four-story apartments, 29 units per acre, which is much denser than the nice neighborhoods we were shown, just to be clear. But thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay. To summarize, in our staff report, we have a series of comp plan items that are given to us showing consistency with overall with the comp plan. We have one comp plan policy that Sarah Ellis went through related to commercial in industrial areas. Our previous conversation covered the quality of materials. I do see your hand, Commissioner Winters, I apologize. We do have a new item brought up related to buffering. And then I was going to ask for additional comment and I will refer to Commissioner Winters.
Thank you. The request also was to see what you were proposing to build in that area, not just the materials. Do you have that?
Thank you. Commissioner Winters, I've just been unmuted. Unfortunately, no, that is not something we were able to produce that quickly. It is something where we are simply just not that far along with this project. And we do apologize for that. You know, we showed something that is similar last time. It is our closest comparable property. We expect to target the same market. And as far as what it will look like, I do have additional slides that can help clarify that. It's something very much, you know, we're in a very competitive world here with this type of multifamily apartment complex. And there's a minimum of kind of the amenities and things that we will absolutely have to offer in order to be competitive in that space. Could we go back to actually my second slide? You know, this is the picture that we showed last time. This is the same applicant's other project in Raleigh. We think the rents will be fairly comparable to this project. This is probably the most comparable project that we could find anywhere. And you see that, you know, this site has no zoning condition related to amenities or pools or anything similar. Next slide. And another closer competitor, there are two other examples. Feel free to cut me off, but these are, these are competitive properties that actually have rents that are a little bit lower than we would probably target, although these are all sort of relatively, you know, a value option. But here again, this property also has no zoning conditions related to amenities or pools. And obviously they've got this, you know, very complete package. And so again, we're competing with this and this is an affordable option as well. Next slide, please. And then the North Hills at Town Center. This property actually has no zoning conditions of any kind, but amenities are just absolutely required in the marketplace. And so we wanted to be able to compete with it and to be flexible about it as this develops. If there's a new amenity or, you know, suddenly pools aren't popular anymore for some reason, we want to be able to change and adapt to that and be part of this market. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Can we, thank you. Are there any additional questions or comments from commissioners? Commissioner Bennett?
Thank you. I'll be quick. This is a comment. It just feels like because there is this comp plan policy of increasing the housing supply, that we're just building houses or housing. And wherever we can put it, and we're saying, see, we're increasing the housing supply. In my opinion, that in and of itself isn't the goal. I mean, that in, if we're putting housing in a place that isn't suitable for residential or if we are continuously targeting a certain market that's really not speaking to the people who need housing the most, I don't see how we're accomplishing the theme of the comp plan. And that's not just limited to this case. I just feel like we keep hearing, this is consistent with the comp plan because it is providing housing options. Not really if we're always targeting $500,000 townhomes or rents of $1,500 a month and up. It's not providing options. It's providing more options for people who can afford that market. And if we're putting something adjacent to a railroad track in an industrial area and not buffering it properly, it just feels to me that it feels, I don't know, I can't think of the word right now. It doesn't feel sincere. I mean, we're providing housing, but we need to provide it strategically and thoughtfully and make sure we truly are doing what is in the public interest.
Thank you for that. Does anybody else have any additional comments or questions for staff or the applicant? Commissioner Miller?
We haven't had, heard any opposition from the public on this, but there's obviously some level of concern among some of the commissioners. Are there any specific policies in the comp plan that you think that this does not further? I mean, I hear what you're saying that $500,000 townhomes don't address housing for, at other price points. And I completely agree with that and that's also an issue to be addressed. But this type of housing is also in demand. And I've heard like some mix of concerns that this might be not high quality enough and then other concerns that this might be too expensive to address other needs of the city. And while I get that from a high-level policy, so I'm unclear on what that argument is in the first place. But then also on the other issue of whether we should approve this rezoning case, I don't see any policies in the comp plan with which this is inconsistent other than expanding, in line with what some of the concerns are from this commission. So I was going to see if I get some, very earnestly trying to see if I can get some clarity on what those issues are.
Commissioner McIntosh?
So Commissioner Bennett asked at our last meeting about economic development priorities area that this is a part of on map ED1 of the 2030 Comprehensive Plan. And information we got back from, and I'm just repeating this, I know we've all read in the staff report. So this is part of Census Block Group 527041, extending to East Millbrook on the north, Rockton Drive on the east, New Hope Church Road on the south, and the railroad tracks on the east. And this area, more than 40% is zoned for industrial, but you know, the surrounding areas are residential. And in this area, approximately 33% of households are considered below poverty. And, you know, I understand Ms. Miller's concern about wanting specific policies in the comp plan to support our, you know, some of our unease. I think part of the problem is the comprehensive plan at this point doesn't seem to clearly address this issue. But where it does, related issues in the comp plan that I think could be called out are, you know, we're talking about a new residential development to, that would hopefully support whoever's living in that residential development. And when I'm looking at the area around it, you know, it's true, this apartment complex may be, you know, beautiful with a beautiful pool in the middle, if there's space for that. And, you know, it may be nice, you know, looking inward, but looking outward, we've got a FedEx shipping facility to the south. And it's, you know, in the middle of industrial area, you could, you know, walk up Atlantic to Millbrook and there is shopping center there. There's a char grill, there's a Sonic, you know, if you can walk it across the street. But it doesn't look like the pictures we see in the comp plan of a continuous street grid of neighborhoods that are connected. And so it doesn't feel like a part of an area that's been planned. It just feels like residential that's dropped in where it'll fit. And additionally, I mean, I'm concerned because this is an area that, you know, the question of what is the Economic Development Priorities Area map for? You know, are we, it's related to other cases we've looked at where we're wanting to bring something in. Is it going to serve the community that already lives here? Or are we displacing that community and someone else is going to move in here and replace those people, I mean, which was gentrification? You know, so I think part of what I'm not clear on is, are these apartments going to be affordable to people who are already living in this area because it's affordable and, you know, already go to the international grocery store down at New Hope Church? Or is this going to be upscale and it's bringing a different group of people in that is going to attract more expensive development that is going to start pushing out existing neighborhoods around Atlantic and New Hope Church? And I don't, I don't have specific policies to point to, but it's just disturbing. And I just, it, it doesn't make sense in relation to building communities or preserving communities to me. And there's a lot of policies relating to that and I just don't have a specific policy to list.
Mr. Bowers, it looks like you have a comment?
Yeah, I was just thinking, there's a lot of discussion about the impact that this, that an apartment development on this vacant piece of property would have on existing housing units. And there is a fairly significant and growing body of research on that very topic that seems to indicate that by absorbing demand, even market rate housing tends to preserve affordability in existing units because if the market rate housing isn't built and all those renters that would have rented these apartments at the market rate rents are still in the market, looking at other units and bidding up the prices of those. I think that's a larger conversation that could be had than around the zoning case. But I think, given that there is a lot of new research and thinking about what the impact is of market rate housing on affordability in existing neighborhoods, it would be worthwhile maybe to take that up at some point for a committee discussion to do a deeper dive on it, since it seems to be something that's coming up a lot in the context of rezonings for housing.
Thank you for that. Commissioner Winters, I saw your hand.
Thank you. I just wanted to add, I know that we typically look for citizen comments or emails or some kind of feedback or people coming in to speak. But I think it is worth mentioning that the surrounding areas, I think the policy is that within 500 feet of the impacted area, they are sent a notice. Within 500 feet, there aren't residential areas, it's more so commercial. So we really would not be hearing from anyone about this. So I think that's worth keeping in mind about why we haven't heard any feedback because they really wouldn't. So I don't think that that should be taken into consideration, the lack of input as a reason why, why that should not have a negative impact as to how we vote because there's been lack of engagement.
Commissioner Miller?
Thank you for that clarification. That is helpful. I was more asking for that because I was truly trying to clarify what the concerns are, and I didn't get that from the public either. And so that's why I was just noting why some of my confusion was there. And I will note, there was concern on the front end about whether it was going to be nice enough. That's why there was concern about wanting to include amenities. And so now there's also concern that maybe it might be too nice for the area. And perhaps it's because this is not in a currently residential area and it is a vacant lot that might be leading to some of the confusion there, which I understand. Overall, for me, since this is consistent with the future land use map and the comp plan and it's using a vacant lot and increasing the housing supply and increasing housing variety, I'm in support of this. But given, and at the same time, the question, the topic of the impact on market rate housing, of market rate housing on affordability is something that I do find very interesting and would love to learn more about, and might suggest that we take that up in committee.
Commissioner Miller, it seemed as if you might have been ready to make a motion. Is that the case?
I am. I moved to approve the 6120. It is consistent with the future land use and the Comprehensive Plan, in particular LU 8.1 Housing Variety, LU 10.3 Retail and Industrial Zones, LU 11.4 Rezoning Development Industrial Areas, and H 1.8 Zoning for Housing. And it is reasonable and in the public interest because it increases housing supply and housing variety while making productive use of a vacant lot.
Thank you. Is there a second? Commissioner O'Haver?
A second, the motion.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Miller and a second from Commissioner O'Haver. Is there any further discussion on the merits of the motion? Commissioner Lantman?
Just a couple of things I would like to point out regarding apartment development such as this. I do think that we need to be rethinking about the rail line because as we do switch to commuter rail lines, I think that's really important. And we do want to have people to have access to that form of transportation. The other thing is, is that in terms of, you know, criteria for developing true affordable housing in this terms of, you know, getting, you know, government help and that sort of thing to build, we are not allowed to build within 500 feet of a railroad. So anything, if I would start to have pause if it were putting, you know, low-rent units next to a railroad because that kind of feels like that might be a disregard, but we're required not to. So I think that overall, I do believe that building along railroads, and that's actually a criticism that I have of the program too, because I think that the rail lines do provide, will provide, end up providing a transportation source. So I don't think that we should discount railroad development along railroads. And then to Ken's point, the supply and demand is impacted by new development. And so what this does is it provides new options for folks who can afford that. And then they move out of their units, which then allows those units to be available to the market. So just wanted to provide that feedback. Thank you.
Thank you for that. I'm going to provide a friendly amendment and addendum to Commissioner Miller's motion. I'd like to also move that the committee of the whole or Strategic Planning, I'm seeing eyes from Strategic Planning that perhaps that might be an appropriate place to have the discussion of the impact of market rate housing. Yes? Okay. So if we add that to the motion to move on to a future agenda for strategic planning. Okay? So I'd like to ask Tanitha for a roll call of the votes. Commissioner Bennett, do you have a question?
I have a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify, I guess, to be clear on what my comment was. I agree with Commissioner Lantman. I wouldn't want to see a bunch of affordable housing put along railroad tracks. That would give me pause as well. My concern, and this is something that we can talk about in strategic planning as well, but my concern is that we see economic development priority areas, we see opportunity zones and these other types of zones. And my concern is that developers might take advantage of those to build development that doesn't necessarily address the concern in the area. So that's what I'm concerned about. But then it's couched in a way that it's expanding the housing supply. Well, okay, yeah, it is. There's no argument that it's doing that. But is it addressing the concern for that particular area? And I understand also that increasing the supply can in fact increase affordability. I would just say, look around though. What are we seeing? Is that happening? What's happening is the affordable housing is being moved out of the areas where we say it's most desirable, along transit lines, where people have access to amenities, where they can walk to shopping. When we try to, I had a conversation with an applicant about a particular case, and I said, well, can you put affordable housing there? And he said, well, because it's near all of this stuff, it drives up the property price. So no, it's not, I can't put affordable housing in there and make money. So that's what I'm saying. We need to think about these things. We are increasing the housing supply. But then the great housing with access to transit and amenities and walkability and livability is not going to the people that we, the people who are targeting for affordable housing. They're being pushed out of the county. They're being pushed out of downtown. They're being, that's what my comment was. And so, and I realize we have to look at things on a case-by-case basis. I realize this particular applicant can't address all of that. And I look forward to having a conversation in strategic planning. But as long as we put the conversation off to committee, we're going to continue to approve rezonings like this, and we're going to continue to get what we've been getting, and the situation isn't going to change. So I appreciate having the conversation, but at some point, we have to stop talking about it and do something about it. And I hope the commission is with me in wanting to do something about it.
Thank you for your comments. Going to go ahead and call the question. Tanitha, can you do a roll call?
Yes, and I have a quick question. Was that vote to approve or to move it to a committee?
That was a motion to approve and a motion to that to committee. The other item related to new development and its impact on market rate housing.
Thank you. Commissioner Bennett, how do you vote? So it sounds like there's two votes. I'm voting nay to the approval of this rezoning, but I'm voting yes to discussing this in committee. If it's all one motion, I'm not sure how I would, because I have two different votes. So are we, is it one motion or two?
Given your concern, I'm going to rescind my amendment, and we'll do that as a second vote.
Okay, so then I vote nay to approving this rezoning.
Thank you. Commissioner, Chair Fox?
Aye.
Commissioner Hicks?
Aye.
Commissioner Lantman?
Aye.
Commissioner McIntosh?
Nay.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Haver?
Aye.
And Commissioner Winters?
Aye.
The motion passes six to two. With that, I'll follow up with the motion to put on an agenda of strategic planning the issue of new construction and its impact on market rate housing. Commissioner Miller?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. And this is just to move to an agenda, so I believe we can just do a show of hands. Yep, okay, show of hands. Those in approval of moving that to an agenda of strategic planning? I see unanimous hand raising, and so that motion passes. All right, moving on to new business. These are requests that have not appeared on a previous planning commission agenda. There are three rezoning requests and one street name change request. First item is item F.1. That's case number SNC 121. This is a request to rename a street in Raleigh. We do not see many of these requests. There is a process in the city code that would allow a street to be renamed, and these requests can be submitted by the public. The process currently requires planning commission review and recommendation to the city council. We do not use the Comprehensive Plan policies to guide the decision. While this may be an infrequent request, we should simply provide a yes or no recommendation to the council. I would like to ask for a staff presentation from Darnell Allen in the Information Technology Department.
Good morning, Chair Fox and Planning Commission. I'm Darnell Allen, City of Raleigh, Information Technology. And what I have before you today is SNC 121, Acocks Street. So very briefly, I will just provide some background, some findings and a recommendation. Acocks Street is located in the Hayes-Barton subdivision, near Five Points. It connects Glenwood Avenue, it runs from Glenwood Avenue over to Reeves Drive. Next slide, please. There's roughly 76 properties that would be impacted by this change. They're highlighted there for your convenience. Next slide. You can go on to the next, actually. Thank you. So we did receive this petition last summer of 2020. And the reason for changing the name of the street, as indicated by the applicant, is that the original name is offensive and honors a white supremacist governor. The reference there is to former North Carolina Governor Charles Brantley Acocks. Next slide. Some of the findings there, we do, as stated previously, there are 76 properties on Acocks Street, and there were 15 signatures received on the petition. Likewise, I've had other correspondents with residents on the street, and some of the consideration and feedback that I received was to perhaps name the street after someone with the same surname. You can see some of those recommendations there. Next slide. And so the formal recommendation that is being brought to you today for your consideration is to change the name to Roanoke Park Drive. Roanoke Park is an existing City of Raleigh park located just off of Acocks Street, surrounded by Cherokee Drive, Greenwood Street, and Bickett Boulevard. Next slide. And one other point of consideration, Acocks Street does have a pre-directional on its designation. So there's a West Acocks Street and an East Acocks Street. So the name, any new name would also receive the same pre-directional designation. I believe that's it for my slides, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. There are five people signed up to speak on this matter. Without objection, I'm going to allow two minutes for each speaker. If Ray can announce the first speaker.
All right, the first speaker is Steve Mangano.
Sure, thank you. I just want to point out Governor Acocks was a documented white supremacist. He was widely considered having played a major role in one of the most notorious events in our state, the Wilmington massacre, which the BBC has recently, is January 17th, compared to the riots that took place at the Capitol on January 6th. ECU, Chapel Hill, Duke renamed buildings after him, and most applicable, Greensboro City Council renamed Acocks Street in their city in 2018. They did not punt the issue or tie it to a broader study. They simply made the change as the change was so obvious. These institutions, I look at costs, inconvenience, or other factors, they did not view it as an either scenario, meaning either change the name or do other things to promote racial equity. They view it as an and. They view it as a responsible step and other responsible steps. And I ask, how would you feel if your family member were killed in the massacre? And the commission asks you to wait for a study to be done or a new process to be passed? When as a city, we undertake a traffic calming study like the one actually taking place on Acocks Street right now, we don't wait for every street in the city to be analyzed. We simply look at the street on a review. Please do not hold this to a different standard. In closing, and to be clear, this is not an attempt to rewrite history, as some may claim. It is exactly the written history that we ask you to acknowledge. The fact that Governor Acocks was a white supremacist, that he was directly responsible for the debts, intimidation, and disenfranchisement of Black North Carolinians, that he destroyed a growing Black community, and that his legacy is far from one that should be honored. Thank you for your consideration of our request. And then we ask you to move this item to the city council where a public hearing can occur. As Commissioner Bennett said earlier, there are times when we need to stop talking about things and taking action. Thank you.
All right, the next speaker is Anna Bickley.
Thank you for taking the time to hear this issue. While a name change of Acocks Street may not be the leading racial equity issue, it is an important one and much-needed step in ensuring that we continue to strive for inclusion as a community. While others have spoken to the merits and reasons for this request, I'd like to take my time to just lay out the basics. Acocks Street is located as a significant secondary road that connects Glenwood and Fairview Road in the Five Points neighborhood. The street is well-traveled and is currently part of a traffic calming study by the city. There is predominantly made up of white residents. The treasures of this neighborhood are Underwood Elementary and Roanoke Park. This petition is being brought by the residents of Acocks Street. While we do support the city taking a broader look at street naming throughout Raleigh, we are proponents for each of these recommendations to be brought by the area residents to present Acocks be the focus today. Our steps to date have been to conduct a small survey of people familiar to us on Acocks Street to a certain interest in the name change, and we received positive response. Our next step was to place flyers in each mailbox with an Acocks address, asking them to email us to receive a survey. Residents requested that survey, and please remember, this also took place early on in COVID. So knocking on doors was not really realistic. Over 65% of the residents... Over sixty-five percent of the residents responded favorably to changing the name. Not one person that we heard from has stated that Acoch was a worthy person of having the street named after him. We have also garnered more support from residents of Acoch since this survey. In a subsequent survey, Roanoke Park Drive was selected as the preferred name. At this point, we submitted our application to engage the city in the renaming process. We are asking you to bring this topic to a public hearing with city council, so more residents can voice their opinion. Thank you.
All right, the next speaker is Leah Wu-Fell.
Good morning. I'm Leah Wu-Fell. I'm a resident of Acoch Street. And while you've just heard about the context and reasoning behind this requested street name change, I'd like to address some arguments that may be against changing the name. First, some may believe that this is an insignificant effort or that it's not a good use of the city's time, and there are more pressing issues. To this, we say that an issue of racial equity is not one step. There's not a magic bullet. Renaming Acoch Street is an opportunity to address an injustice. While history is seen through major events, it's the many minor events and transgressions that build up and cause pain and anguish, which can play out in dire ways, as we have seen. Renaming Acoch Street is a small step, but an important one on the path to building a more just and equitable society. Second, we acknowledge that there will be a cost and administrative burden, both to the city and to individuals, to undertake this street name change. This is a fact, but costs are incurred every day as the city builds towards a better future. In terms of the burden to residents, updating their addresses will take time, effort, and money. But we believe it's a surmountable hurdle, akin to moving. Ordering a duplicate driver's license for fourteen dollars might be one of the top costs per person. And ultimately, the costs and inconvenience should not stop us from removing in honor and righting wrong. Finally, as has been mentioned, it's been proposed that the street be rededicated after another member of the Acoch family. But we are not in favor of this as we think it doesn't address the root cause of the issue and instead obscures history. We believe Raleigh should follow the lead of Greensboro and remove the Acoch name. Thank you very much for your time. We appreciate you considering the points we made today, and we hope that you recommend this petition move forward to city council. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. The next two speakers are in opposition. The first is Carol Stugard.
Hi, can you hear me? Yes. That's okay, okay. I've lived at five oh six Acoch for seventeen years, and I am opposed to the petition. Darnell at City Planning I've been in touch with, and he informed me that the name change petitioners on my street received fifteen signatures out of about twenty total replies from flyers they posted to all seventy-six houses. This means a vast majority of over fifty homes did not reply to the survey at all. Several people I asked about this said they never even got the flyer. And the way, I have a beef with the way this survey was conducted because it represents a sample error or a survey bias for different reasons. Number one, you are more likely to reply to the survey worded the way it was if you already do support the idea that was proposed. And number two, you're more likely to reply if the survey is official, and your no vote is kept confidential from the people who really want the name change. So the percentage of yes votes in the first survey probably over-represents in favor of the name change. I know of others who didn't vote. Most object to the time, expense, and potential liability that the name change with respect to their household business. Some knows are political in nature. Some object to the costs to the city that are better directed elsewhere. Also, there's talk about the intangible cost to the community. The street name change not considered necessary to all owners on Acoch will divide us neighbor by neighbor within the street. And there's already so much division in our city and state. And my next point is something I just researched. Hayes Barton Historic District, like Darnell laid out, Acoch Street is in the district. And it was nominated by the North Carolina Department of Cultural Resources and listed in two thousand and two on the National Register of Work Places. And the public materials at the National Park Service, the Hayes Barton Historic District, is described as, quote, "roughly bounded by St. Mary's Street, Fairview, Acoch Street, Scale Street, and Williamson Drive," end quote. There are twenty-two homes on Acoch Street that are listed as contributing structures in this document out of four hundred and fifty-seven buildings listed. The street names are platted.
Ms. Stugard, I believe your time has expired.
I thought we had ten minutes on the opposing side.
I believe you had two minutes each per speaker.
Oh, I thought the, okay.
For the commission. If we get to grant additional time at the end, we may be able to do so. But I believe that you've also covered these issues in your email as well.
No, not the national register part. I just found this out.
Okay.
Affirmed it with the Parks Department.
Without objection, I'd like to add at least thirty more seconds for Ms. Stugard to finish her comments related to the national district. Okay?
Okay, so the, this really is an effort to change history in light that this, the whole neighborhood, the historic district is on the national register. And I argue that, given the state took so much trouble to preserve Hayes Barton in the U.S. Department of Interior, there's a public good in keeping the street name so people can learn about history. This would be an impact on the historic site like the Bloodworth-South Park zoning issue that you discussed earlier at this meeting. So I'd request a resurvey by the planning department to get an accurate read on support. I see it.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, the last speaker is Chris Hamilton.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I am opposed to renaming Acoch Street due to the inference that the street is named in honor of Charles Brantley Acoch. The most obvious problem that Acoch is, that Acoch is a surname, not an individual's name. In this area, Acoch is actually a relatively common surname. Acoch Street was platted in nineteen twenty. There were multiple Acoch households in the nineteen-ten and nineteen-twenty census in Raleigh and Wake County, not including Charles Brantley Acoch. Today, the Wake County real estate records show over fifty distinct property owners with the surname Acoch. The street signs do not indicate Charles Brantley, nor does the original Hayes Barton plat map of the neighborhood. To honor an individual, you use an individual's name. When Raleigh wanted to honor Martin Luther King by naming a street after him, it wasn't named King Boulevard. It was named Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard. UNC Chapel Hill recently renamed several campus buildings. UNC had two buildings with the Acoch name, the Acoch Residence Hall, named specifically for Charles Brantley Acoch, and the Acoch Family Medicine Center, named specifically for William Brantley Acoch. The Residence Hall was renamed, the medical building was not. So it is important to have a specific individual named in order to justify the change. Cameron Village was recently renamed to the Village District, but there is still a Cameron Street in the Village District. Why? Because renaming buildings is easy, but renaming streets is hard, and it should be hard. There is a significant burden implied in a street name change. Allowing a vocal few to force this burden on the majority is simply wrong. The city needs to have a more rigorous and transparent process for renaming streets based on public initiative. The idea that a flawed survey of fifteen to twenty people on a street with seventy-six property owners can get a planning commission hearing that I only found out about by accident, where only a few may be actually available to comment, which then gets passed to city council and turned into a political football, seems badly misguided. The city needs to raise the bar for this process. As an alternative example for how street naming is done in other cities, the city of Houston first requires a public supplied petition with signatures of seventy-five percent of the abutting property owners in favor of the name change before the city and the planning department are even involved.
Thanks for your comment, sir. I have a question for staff. As I understand it, it is rare for these items to come to the planning commission. And currently, you're in the process of changing what the process is for street name changes. Can somebody speak to that?
Um, yes, it is relatively rare, but the current process does involve the planning commission. There is a process change in the works that would send these straight to city council for their final decision without planning commission review.
Is the rationale behind that? Because there's, it's not a land use implication where the planning commission would be reviewing it based on adopted policy?
Yes, and I think the other, the other thought was that it would streamline the process. People would not feel the need to speak out at two different separate meetings and processes. It could all be heard in one public hearing.
Okay. Given the unique nature of this one and that the process is, it's changing right now, so this would be the very last one that we see. What I'm going to do is recommend that we move this one out without a recommendation, but with a statement that could be read to the city council regarding the commission's support for neighborhoods removing symbols of systemic racism. So with that, I'm going to make a motion to move this to council without a recommendation. Is there a second? Commissioner Miller?
Second.
Right. We have a motion and a second. Is there any debate or discussion on the merits of the motion? Commissioner McIntosh, I saw your hand first, and then Commissioner Winters.
I'd like to make a friendly amendment to the motion, and I'm not sure how to word it, but I thought the suggestion by the last speaker, there might be a more formal process for community input, is a really good one. The example of the Houston petition makes less sense to me. I'm sorry, I don't have this worded as a motion. And I guess I'd also just like to say, you know, previously, this is a topic that might have gotten discussed and worked out in a CAC meeting or a series of CAC meetings. And it seems like the whole neighborhood needs to be involved in the decision before it's taken to a public hearing. And I don't know how to word that in a motion.
That's an excellent point. What I can do is take that information and relay it to council when we report out this item. So what I'd like to do is call, oh, Commissioner Winters, you had a comment as well?
Yes, thank you. In relation to what you said, what you said that could be read out from us in terms of including systemic racism, I think that needs to be very clear, that that is the stance that we're taking, and it should not be an option to be read. And to further add, my concern is that it spelled out what the, the proponents for changing a name would be specifically, like systemic racism. My concern is that other street names for other people that, for instance, Dandridge Court, areas in Madonna Acres that are named after African-Americans would not be changed, just due to wanting to change a name. So there should be really clear points as to why a name is changed. And it should be something that is detrimental to society, like systemic racism.
Okay, point taken. I'd like to call the question and have Tineke do a roll call of the vote.
Commissioner Bennett, how do you vote?
I'm sorry, what, what are, what are we voting for? To send it to council with the statement from Chair Fox?
So what you're voting on is sending it to council without a recommendation? And then what I'm going to do, and you do not need to motion this, is I'm going to follow up, and we're going to supply a statement to council regarding what our position is on these types of issues.
Okay, aye.
Thank you. Chair Fox?
Aye.
Commissioner Hicks?
Aye.
Commissioner Lantman?
Aye.
Commissioner McIntosh?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Haver?
Aye.
And Commissioner Winters?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously. And without objection, and please correct me if I've missed something, is the statement to council would show our support for communities which chose to remove symbols of systemic racism. We ask that council, moving forward in changing the process for street name changes, address what the parameters are regarding what allows a name change, and then also altering the process and how voting takes place. But seeing some head nods? Okay, Commissioner O'Haver?
Um, I'm sorry, why can't that be part of moving this case forward? We've, we've, we've voted statements in previously that would go to council, and I think we're all in agreement with what you're saying. So is there a way to make that a little bit more substantial? I, I'm confused by the procedure here because it seems like we've...
It's a moot point almost at this point. You've motioned, and we've moved it forward without a recommendation. And what we're going to do is make a statement. That statement is also just a recommendation. Council can either take that information and use it or not. That's how recommendations work.
Fair enough.
But thank you for your comment. Moving on to the next item on the agenda. It's item number F point two, case number Z twenty-seven twenty. This is a request to rezone approximately thirty-five acres of land on Industrial Drive at the I four forty Beltline and Atlantic Avenue from industrial mixed-use three stories, industrial mixed-use three stories parking limited with special highway overlay District Two to commercial mixed-use twenty stories conditional use. The overlay district would remain. This property is located in the Midtown area plan boundary, and we heard from the applicant during the Midtown plan discussions. John Anagnost will present on behalf of the staff. And as I understand it, Commissioner O'Haver needs to recuse himself from this. Commissioner O'Haver?
Yeah, I requested I be recused from this case as my firm is involved in this process.
Excellent. Without objection, we'll move forward and hear the presentation from staff.
Good morning. This is Z dash twenty-seven dash twenty at the southwest quadrant of Atlantic Avenue and I four forty, also to the east of Wake Forest Road and north of Six Forks Road. And move to the next slide, please. We can take a little closer look at the zoning map. And so there is that special highway overlay district along I four forty, which the applicant has requested to maintain. And so the major change that's requested through this zoning is to rezone from industrial mixed-use with a three-story height to commercial mixed-use with a twenty-story height. Next slide, please. Here you can see the surrounding location. The site being graded in this image is the New Wegmans there, and then to the north of that is the Trader Joe's. And then you can see Six Forks Road and I four forty in this image. The site immediately to the south was rezoned two years ago to a residential mixed-use seven-story district. Next slide, please. And here's a little closer look at the site itself. So the current use is largely wholesale distribution. There are some office uses at the north end along four forty. And also in the northeast corner is a vehicle service depot for the Raleigh Police Department. Next slide, please. Here you can see on the ground with that warehouse and distribution use looks like today, so one-story, large-scale brick and concrete buildings there, and then some office uses. Next slide, please. And this is the intersection of Industrial Drive and Front Street. So this is looking south on Industrial Drive on the right-hand side of the image. And so again, you can kind of see the character today is very low and sort of spread out. Next slide, please. The applicant has offered conditions to prohibit some of the uses that are allowed in commercial mixed-use, as well as limiting the total entitlement to roughly triple what the current zoning would allow. And then there are requirements applied to Industrial Drive that create a similar condition to an urban limited frontage. Additionally, parking structures outside of that area would be screened. And then there is a condition requiring an easement at the north end of the property that would potentially facilitate the installation of a pedestrian bridge that's recommended by the Midtown, Walkable Midtown. That's recommended by the Midtown, Walkable Midtown Plan. Next slide, please. Here you can see the overall development potential between the existing zoning and proposed zoning. And so due to those zoning conditions that have been offered, retail entitlement actually goes down significantly due to that cap on retail square footage, and then with the office and residential components, as I mentioned before, it's roughly tripling the allowed amount of development. Next slide, please. The future land use map here is community mixed use, and that does support the commercial mixed-use zoning district. Typically, in a situation like this where you have community mixed use in an urban form area, the maximum recommended height would be twelve stories. The Walkable Midtown area plan does expand that recommended height to twenty stories, which is what the request is for. And so because of that combination of the future land use map, excuse me, and Walkable Midtown, it is consistent with the future land use map. Next slide, please. The urban form map here has a number of designations. I four forty is a parkway corridor that is supported by the retention of the special highway overlay district in that portion of the site, which will require either tree conservation area or planted landscaping area along the highway. Additionally, there is a growth center mapped on the entire site and a main street on Industrial Drive. So the condition requiring an urban limited style of development on Industrial Drive, excuse me, supports that main street designation. There's also a custom streetscape that's required by the Walkable Midtown Plan. But there are other streets within the site. There's Front Street, and then the street plan actually proposes three new streets within the site. And so without the offering of a zoning frontage, there is little guarantee that those streets would be built in a way that supports a pedestrian-friendly environment. So that is inconsistent with urban format. So the overall evaluation is that the request is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. It is consistent with the future land use map, but it is inconsistent with urban format. Next slide, please. Here you can see a number of consistent policies related to developing denser and mixed-use development in areas that are well-served by existing city infrastructure. You can skip ahead two slides. The inconsistent policies are related to the lack of a frontage and any additional conditions to support the urban form designation of the growth center that covers the entire site specifically for those new streets on the street plan, as well as Front Street. And then there are some impacts to traffic congestion in the surrounding area that are likely to emerge from the additional development that's allowed by this request. And next slide. Finally, there's some inconsistent policies related to the Walkable Midtown Plan, and those have to do with for taller requested zoning heights, providing some public benefits, either in the term of, in the form of amenity areas, affordable housing, or additional multimodal transportation support. The condition requiring an easement for the pedestrian bridge is a good start, but it does not do a substantial amount towards advancing that goal. And we have to work with the applicant to try to come up with some ways that they could think about offering other conditions, and they seem receptive to that idea. But at the moment, the amount of development related to the amount of public benefit is not consistent with the policies in Walkable Midtown, and therefore, between that and the urban form inconsistency, the request is overall inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. Next slide, please. And so you have until your first meeting in April to make a recommendation, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, John. Next, we will hear from Mac Paul representing the applicant. The applicant and all those in support have ten minutes to speak.
Thanks, Chairman Fox. John, if you don't mind pulling up our presentation, I'll walk through that. Mac Paul, Morningstar Law Group, here on behalf of Spectrum Properties. The first slide shows kind of a general area of the Midtown Plan we're all familiar with over the last few months. You spent a lot of time on discussing it, and as you'll see, kind of to the northwest, there's North Hills, which was the epicenter for a lot of the growth in Midtown starting about twenty years ago. And this would be kind of the first mixed use in office and residential development at the east end of Midtown, which has largely been either industrial or retail. Before going into a little more detail about the plan, I do want to introduce John Boylan with Spectrum to introduce himself and the company, and what drew them to this site and the opportunity here. So if I could, please turn it over to John for a minute.
Good morning.
Yes, we can hear you.
Well, thank you for allowing us to be here today. As Mac said, I'm John Boylan with Spectrum. I've lived in the Raleigh community for twenty-four years. My wife and I raised our son here, and we're very proud to call Raleigh our home. Our firm, Spectrum, is quickly approaching forty years in business, and we have been part of the Raleigh business community for over thirty-six years. I'm fortunate to be part of the Spectrum team for thirty-three years as well. For those who are not familiar with our firm, we're a commercial real estate developer and operator specializing in office multifamily and mixed-use properties throughout the southeast with particular focus in Raleigh, Charlotte, and Nashville, Tennessee. Project ranges from suburban office buildings to apartment projects and high-rise office buildings and large mixed-use projects. Local projects you would be familiar with is the Caluminate Office project at the corner of Six Forks and Strickland. Early in our tenure, we developed the North Chase Office building on Six Forks Road. A lot of people think of that with the large fountain that's in place. Glenwood Plaza, an office building along Glenwood. We've done several office buildings in the Regency area of Cary, including the new project overlooking Symphony Lake. We were part of Wells Fargo Capital Center and the Alexander Square Parking Deck and Retail Center along Fayetteville Street, and we're charter members of the Downtown Raleigh Alliance and active in that for many years. A few prominent projects we're working on now in Charlotte include the Bearings Corporate Headquarters. It's a thirty-story office high-rise that includes a Kipton Hotel, and as well as an exciting new project in Charlotte's South End, which is called The Vantage. It's a six-hundred-thousand-square-foot building, including two eleven-story office buildings, ground-floor retail, and a ten-story parking deck with a hotel to be constructed on top of that. We were recently selected to work on the new transit center in downtown Charlotte, and we begin to work both with the public and private stakeholders as the project begins to take shape. We're also very active in part of a major mixed-use project in downtown Nashville called Fifth and Broadway, which is a major office multifamily and retail project. We've been looking for an opportunity in Raleigh for many years to help Raleigh continue down its path as a strong and vibrant community. When the Northside opportunity presented itself, we knew that the site, in the short and long term, was very exciting. Our goal as companies to find projects that we can work on, that can make positive and lasting impacts on the community. Our long-term vision of the project matched with the long-term vision of the small area plan. We believe that Northside can be a great long-term project with office, life science, multifamily, and some limited retail uses. Our challenge now is that the site, as Mac said, references, it's on thirty-four acres. We have a great stable of tenants, about thirty tenants in place that have varying leasing commitments ending at different times. We're very early in our planning phase of how the sites can use and the layout that we're as evolving. The current pandemic is causing everyone to take a fresh look at approaches, and we're not immune to that as well. Raleigh and the Triangle has been, have long been a great place to live and an engine for innovation. We believe that Northside can help foster those ideals as well. Thank you.
Thanks, John. If we could go to the next slide, I'm going to move through the next three fairly quickly. John, Anagnost, if you could go to the next slide. Yeah, just to reorient you from the Midtown Plan, this shows you the loop, which is the pedestrian bridge, and the interconnectivity to some of the green infrastructure. So this is a great site to kind of line up with Crabtree Creek Greenway. Next slide, please. Then we show the transit, pretty robust transit in the area that is existing. Next slide. And then the next two slides really just show the importance of Industrial Drive, and as staff indicated, we have been working on the urban frontage, which is really, we understand, a key issue with respect to the comprehensive plan analysis for this site. While it certainly matches the height recommendation and the base honey district recommendation, there is policy guidance for an urban frontage, and we've conditioned Industrial Drive to essentially match an urban frontage. Next slide, please. And this shows you kind of the main street section for what Industrial Drive will become with the development on our site, with, you know, wide sidewalk streets pulled up to the building, and on-street, buildings pulled up to the sidewalk and on-street parking. Next slide, please. And so I just want to really conclude with two things. One, you can see that there are kind of a range of uses. There's highly, high concentration of retail in front of this across Industrial Drive, whereas what we would be contemplating is a mix of office or life science campus and multifamily. Currently, the entitlement would allow about half a million square feet of retail, which would add, you know, obviously, a lot of retail to what's already there. Under the zoning, proposed conditions would be only seventy-five thousand square feet of retail, essentially serving as an amenity for this area. The reason we've limited at this point the urban frontage to Industrial Drive is the side streets are, there's, there's Front Street currently, and as John said, you know, we worked to create an interconnected street grid in the Midtown Plan, but their existing buildings, existing tenants, and the possibility of a life science use would bring in kind of the adaptive reuse of some of these large industrial buildings, which are a hundred thousand square feet, which would be a change of use of a large building. And there are some, you know, complicated aspects of dealing with an urban frontage in an adaptive reuse scenario. So that has been the reason we have focused on Industrial Drive, which is the primary street under the UDO, where the emphasis ought to be. And while we've continued to have a lot of dialogue with staff about, you know, pushing as far as we can with the urban frontage without inhibiting the ability to do adaptive reuse in a life science scenario. So with that, I would also just point out, we did a traffic study. Travis Fluid with Kim Lee Horn is available if you have questions about traffic. You know, we're very excited about the Midtown Plan. As you may remember, we, you know, while Spectrum acquired this kind of well into the process on the Midtown Plan, you know, they did engage once they became a stakeholder, and, you know, we've appreciated the work with the city and the staff and the community on that plan, and feel like this is going to take this part of Midtown a big step toward that vision, which has historically been pretty industrial and retail-heavy. Thanks very much, and we can answer any questions that you have.
Okay, there's no one else signed up to speak on this matter. I'd like to open it up for questions and comments from the commissioners, and I will start off with a question to the applicant. Has the applicant considered conditions relating to affordability or enhancing some of the conditions related to the lack of frontage along some of the side streets?
Chairman Fox, let me respond on the frontage question, and then John Boylan can speak to the affordability or affordable housing question. Yeah, I mean, we have been, as I said, a lot of time has been spent analyzing a myriad of iterations of development plans in light of whether there were an urban frontage that was not just along Industrial Drive, but extended back onto the site. We know because of the Belt Line, there's some, you know, what we would contemplate with vertical development, north of Front Street is probably some structured parking to accommodate the more intense vertical development, and there are at least a couple of locations where those structured parking plans are presently that would be difficult to have an active ground-levels use. So that, you know, is an issue we've been looking at and working through relative to Front Street and north of Front Street, back, since it does back up to the Belt Line. And then, as I said, I mean, we've, again, continued to go through a variety of iterations looking at risks if we do have an urban frontage on some of the side streets to a life science scenario that, you know, takes an existing building and maybe shrinks it some, but largely keeps the footprint in place, and is that going to create some challenges at site plan? Because we believe that would be a tier-three site plan. So again, that's kind of taking you through our thinking and how it's evolved over time, because we do see this as being a walkable, you know, mixed-use development. It's just the adaptive reuses, you know, costs and pause.
As it relates to the question around housing itself, we're, you hear, you know, consistently with the comments that we're making, that we're very, very early on in the design and what we're trying to attack the best way to develop this project out. And as, as part of that, if we do an adaptive reuse, how much it leans toward adaptive reuse, how much it leans toward life science or, or office, and as well as the housing component itself. And while we're unclear exactly how that's going to balance out, we, we have not contemplated affordable housing as it's defined at this point in the project. We have not done that.
Thank you. Do any other commissioners have any questions or comments for the applicant or for staff? Okay. One additional question for the applicant. I did see an email come in about stormwater and providing additional stormwater conditions. Can you respond to that?
Chairman Fox, I'm sorry, was that directed at staff or the applicant?
It was directed to the applicant.
You know, we have not heard comments about additional stormwater requirements. We have an engineering firm that's been involved in looking deeply at the stormwater issues on this site, and, you know, we could provide more information about that, and certainly if staff says that there's more that is needed here, or someone else wants to hear more detail on it, you know, we can discuss it. But, you know, again, at this point, through the process, we have not heard anything specific to it, other than looking at how it would be accomplished on this site.
Thank you. Commissioner McIntosh?
Yes, I have, thank you, I have a comment. I guess I'm disappointed that, you know, while there's a statement that developers excited about the Midtown Plan, I'm disappointed that the development as currently proposed is overall inconsistent with the Walkable Midtown Plan and also inconsistent with the comp plan. And I'm especially disappointed that no subsidized housing is being offered. This is a part of the Midtown Plan, and it seems like, you know, this is something we just passed last December, and it's just disappointing to see that one of the first developments we're seeing is not following the recommendations of all that work.
Any additional comments from commissioners? Commissioner Hicks?
Yes, thank you. So CM is generally... So CM is generally, recommends heights to 12 stories max. But because this is in the Midtown Area Plan, it expands that to 20 stories. And so I think, from my point of view, if the ask is for additional stories based on the Midtown Area Plan, that some of the requests of that plan should be incorporated into the application, specifically affordability in housing, addressing the frontage. And I wanted to maybe make a suggestion. The idea of adaptive reuse for a potential life science use is really great. I think we've been saying, can we see more of this in the city? And so I'm wondering if there's a way to address frontage that if the buildings are retained, might be handled in one way. And if they're not, then there would be more of an urban frontage placed on any new construction. And maybe there's some ways to address some of these issues in a manner like that. Thank you.
Hearing the comments, what I'd recommend is we hold this at the table to allow the applicant to address some of the items that we've brought up, specifically frontage, affordability in housing, and how the frontage affects the potential adaptive reuse for life sciences. Okay, without objection, this one is held at the table. I believe action is not required on it until April 26, so we were okay on timing.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. All right, moving on, item F.3, case number Z5320. This is a request to rezone approximately five acres of land from residential 4 to residential mixed-use seven-stories parking limited conditional use. Don Belk will present on behalf of staff. Commissioner O'Haver, I believe you need to recuse yourself from this one as well.
Yep, unfortunately, I'm sorry, but I need to request to be recused. But I will be back for the last case.
Excellent. With that, you are recused, and we'll move on to Mr. Belk's presentation.
Good morning, commissioners. Rezoning Z5320 is a request to rezonate approximately five acres from R4 to residential mixed-use, seven-stories parking limited frontage with conditional use. The neighborhood meeting occurred in early January. And just a reminder that your deadline for action is March 8. This is the last regularly scheduled meeting before that time. Next slide, please. The predominant zoning in the area, east and south of the proposed site, is R4. Note the Inman Park PD to the north and some office and commercial mixed-use, including CX 12 to the west. The area lies near the Crabtree Valley Mall complex, adjacent to that specific area. And note also, this is one of the last remaining undeveloped tracks this close to Crabtree Valley Mall. Next slide. And a close-up of the site, showing it is densely wooded in the eastern section of the parcel. A few perspectives from Leadmine Road, looking north and south. And here, we're showing a lead mine at Philcrest, a couple of views there. And then a street view of Philcrest Road, note the wooded nature of that street. The applicant has submitted new conditions since this item was first, once I said a revised conditions has been submitted. These first three would limit the principal uses to multi-unit living and congregate care. Also, there are some specific commercial uses, retail uses that are listed. A restaurant as well. The restaurant would be limited to no more than 3,000 square feet. And in the case of a congregate care facility, the number of units would not exceed. These are the newer conditions that were received after the neighborhood meetings were held. A 50-foot principal building setback for the northern property line. This is where the closest proximity of residents of Inman Park to the site. Also, a Type B 1 protective yard along that property line. And specifics on the height of the building, it would be limited to six stories. A comparison of the existing and proposed zoning. Note the increases in residential density for both the apartment type, as well as congregate care. Maximum units shown as well, and differences in setbacks. There are no office uses here, and retail is limited. The restaurant use is limited to 3,000 square feet. Other retail uses specified for the property would, under the UDO, be allowed a maximum of 4,000 feet. Scores well on our carbon emission analysis. It has transit access, smaller units permitted, and a higher walk score than average. Here showing the site and the proximity to Route 23L Millbrook. There is a bus stop at the corner of Leadmine Road and Philcrest. Affordability analysis, this would add to the housing supply and permit a variety of housing types within walking distance of transit. No subsidized units are included here. The request that our ex zoning is consistent with the future land use map designation of office and residential mixed-use. And we find that this proposal is consistent with the conference of plan, is consistent with both the future land use map and with the urban form map, which designates Leadmine Road as an urban thoroughfare. Fifteen policies noted, nine of them, these nine are listed. You can move to the next slide. And the remaining policies are consistent as well. No inconsistent policies identified here. Again, your deadline for action is March 8. Want to note also regarding a TIA. The applicant proactively conducted a TIA for this proposal. However, staff's initial review found that no TIA was required. Therefore, it has not been reviewed by staff. Thank you, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Don. Next, we'll hear from Laura Goody, representing the applicant. The applicant and all those in support have 10 minutes to speak.
Thank you, Commissioner Fox, can you hear me okay?
Yes, man, I can.
Thank you. Again, my name is Laura Goody. Good morning, commissioners. I'm with Parker Poe. My business address is 301 Fayetteville Street, Raleigh, North Carolina, and I'm the land use attorney for this rezoning. Also on the line today to answer questions is Ross Massey with Stewart, Inc., the site planning engineer for this rezoning, as well as Caroline Bajarski with Remy Kemp, the traffic engineer for the site. Next slide, please. This is a request to rezone six parcels along Leadmine Road from R4 to RX 7 PLCU for multifamily and/or congregate care with an ancillary retail or service use permitted. Next slide, please. The applicant is Singh Development LLC, a family-owned and operated real estate development company with a regional office here in Kiri, North Carolina. And on this slide, you can see some examples of similar developments that Singh has done in the area to see the quality of the developments they've done in this area. Next slide, please. As staff noted, this request is consistent with the flume designation of office and residential mixed-use, which is primarily for properties along major streets where low-density residential uses are no longer appropriate and encourages a mix of residential and office uses. And this request will allow for a mix of residential uses and an ancillary retail or service use, which is more appropriate for these properties along the stretch of Leadmine Road than the low-density single-family residences that are currently there. Also, this RX district designation meets one of the intents of the RX district, which is to serve as a transition between other more intense mixed-use districts across Leadmine Road, CX and Ox, and then the residential neighborhoods to the east and the single-family to the north. Additionally, the proposed conditions are meant to address these transitions between the site and the adjacent single-family residences. Next slide, please. There is no urban form applied to these properties. However, Leadmine is designated as an urban thoroughfare, and the properties across Leadmine are designated as a city growth center, both of which call for a hybrid frontage. So we selected the parking limited frontage, which is hybrid, and will also create a cohesive urban fabric in this area with the properties across Leadmine that also apply the PL frontage. Next slide, please. This slide shows how the proposed zoning designation and uses are compatible with the existing zoning and uses in the general area. The applicant recognizes that there are single-family residences to the east and to the north within the Inman Park Plan development. However, this is a major roadway. Leadmine is a four-lane divided avenue with a mix of uses, including office, commercial, and multi-unit living. And what the applicants tried to do with this application is make this more of a transition here with the RX 7 CU zoning with a condition down in height, six stories, to be consistent as a transition between some of the more intense mixed uses to the west, with some of them being 12- and 7-story height designations. Next slide, please. So this slide outlines how the applicant has responded to neighbor comments by adding conditions to address the transition between the site and the single-family residences to the north and east. The applicant had the two required neighborhood meetings, but in addition, had a small group meeting with the adjacent residents to the north that are closest to the site, has exchanged numerous emails over multiple months, as well as had multiple meetings with Councilmember Buffkin, who represents this district, to continue the dialogue and to try to address neighbor concerns as best as possible at this time without chosen uses of site plan or grading plan. So as you can see here, one concern at the first neighborhood meeting was wanting to see a commercial use in addition to residential. So the applicant added a new condition to allow for a limited retail or service ancillary use at the site. Additional comments were about seven-story building height designation, which we'll talk about in more detail. In response, the applicant submitted a six-story condition down from that RX 7 designation. Additionally, there were concerns about the building setback along the northern property line and buffering, because the northern property is a PD. So the neighborhood transitions applicable to the eastern side are not applicable to the north. So in response to those concerns, the applicant added a 50-foot building setback from the northern property line, in line with what's required on the eastern property line, and increased the required 20-foot buffer to a 30-foot buffer along the northern property line. Next slide, please. The next two slides show the conditions, which staff has already outlined. One thing I wanted to note is that for the limit on the units, that's condition number three. That 350 limit is for either multi-unit or congregate care or a mix of the two. In either of those cases, they shall not exceed 350. The conditions shown here in red are the ones that were added in response to neighbor comments. Next slide, please. And again, these three conditions were added after the second neighborhood meeting, which staff outlined previously. Next slide, please. This slide shows the concept plan, which is an update from what was previously shown at the neighborhood meeting. The update here is to show the added 50-foot building setback from the northern property line and the increase from 20 to 30 feet for the Type B buffer. Note that the northern property line here, shown on the left. We've had lots of questions about the exact building layout. However, due to COVID, the developer at this time has not been able to forecast exactly what the best use will be for the site six months to a year from now. So the exact uses and building configurations have not been decided at this point in time. But we have provided what we are able to provide at this time, which is to show the buildable area. This slide also shows the required transition yards and transition zones that I was speaking to earlier, that are applicable to the eastern property line along that R4 zoning to the east. And note that the residents to the north in Inman Park will also benefit from those transition zones, namely, the building height requirement that it's no more than 40 feet at the 50-foot setback line, and then the step backs one-for-one until you get to the 100-foot setback from the eastern property line. Next slide, please. This slide shows why we've chosen the RX 7 building height designation, primarily due to challenging topography on the site. You can see here, there is significant slope down both north to south and then west to east off of Leadmine. Also, at the time that this application was filed, the text change on building height had not yet been passed. And so there was confusion about how building height would be measured. After that text change was passed in December, and based on neighbor concerns, we conditioned down from RX 7 to also include a six-foot, or, sorry, a six-story building height across the site. This slide also shows the intentions to step down generally building height from south to north. However, that six-foot or the six-story building height is really meant to address what we can at this point without a grading plan. Next slide, please. We've also discussed with the residents, site access and traffic mitigation. As staff noted, a TIA is not required at this stage. However, developer proactively submitted a TIA, knowing that this is at a busy intersection and a busy part of town. Currently, the proposal is for three points of access for traffic mitigation and for life safety. And there have been requests that the access off of Philcrest Drive be removed. However, in initial conversations with DOT, our understanding is that DOT wants that access drive, so we are not able to remove that at this point in time. The TIA indicates that there are no required improvements, and there will be minimal impact to traffic. However, there will be improvements to turn lanes, including on Philcrest Drive and on Leadmine Road to address queuing that's anticipated from this rezoning. Next slide, please. Finally, this slide shows, as staff noted, that this rezoning request is consistent with multiple comprehensive plan policies, and there are no inconsistencies. It's consistent with the flume. It will provide housing variety and increased housing in a compact development along an urban thoroughfare with existing transit. It will reinforce the urban pattern in the area and has included conditions that address buffering and transition between the site and adjacent single-family properties. At this time, I'd like to reserve my remaining time to respond to comments. And we thank you for your time and are happy to answer any questions the commission may have at this time.
Thank you for the presentation. I understand there are a number of people from the public here to speak. Moderator, how many people are available for speaking from the public?
We have six folks signed up today that seem to be all present.
Okay. With that, with our total of 10 minutes for the neighborhood speakers, I'm going to put a minute and a half for each speaker, with six total speakers assumed.
All right, the first speaker is April Gross.
Hi, thank you. I request my presentation to be available. And I'd also request the additional remaining minute be granted to Matthew Isley. Okay, thank you. Good morning, commissioners. I'd like to speak to the character of the neighborhood and the overall zoning patterns of the area, with supporting visuals for your consideration today. I'd like to offer you an inside view to the character of the four low-density residential neighborhoods surrounding the proposed development on the north, south, and east. If you travel down Leadmine Road, you may not notice our neighborhoods, and that's quite intentional. These are established neighborhoods. While conveniently located, these neighborhoods very much feel away from it all. They're protected from the light and noise by mature trees and setbacks, and they have a park-like feel. This unique character is the reason that most residents live here. The impact of this project affects approximately 50 The impact of this project affects approximately 1,500 to 2,000 citizens in these neighborhoods. And the reason you've likely heard so much concern from us is not that we don't want the land developed. The reason is that the size, density, and conditions of this proposal threaten the fabric and character of our neighborhoods in an irreversible way, so much so that some residents, including myself, have started to look for a new place to live. Our neighbors, along with city council, have worked diligently with the developer to bring this proposal towards compatibility, but we have not received satisfactory responses from them. I've outlined many incompatibility issues in my written statement. However, to illustrate two examples of the challenges we are experiencing, there have been zero conditions offered on the east side of the proposal, which is directly adjacent to R4 zoning, and has no site plan has been shared to date. Next slide, please. I would also like to offer a broader picture of the overall zoning of Leadmine Road. The developer has shrewdly suggested that this proposal will transition our lower-density neighborhoods to more intensive use that can be found on the west side of Leadmine Road. But as you can see, there's a uniform and distinct area on the east side that is a well-established land use pattern of low-density residential. Please, I respectfully ask you to deny this. It goes against the theme of building successful neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next speaker is Prior Gibson.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I would yield to the chair to allow the last speaker, Mr. Isley, who's president of the Inman Park Homeowners Association, to have two additional minutes, if that would be permissible. I won't need that. I'll stay with my minute and a half. Madam Chair, the Z5320 rezoning does not address an unmet service or unique need. Raleigh already has numerous and available properties already properly zoned. There are scores of properties just like this and projects just like this already built in Raleigh or already being built or planned to be built. The current zoning at our, the current zoning of this property at R4 right now already allows for substantial, profitable, and marketable development, and a rezoning of this magnitude will guarantee that this commission will have continuing and aggressive speculative rezoning. And I take exception to the applicant's presentation of brand-new slides today. Just yesterday, we got a note where they were saying that we're no longer going to take 30 feet of the adjacent homeowner's property setback lines to satisfy their R7 50-foot setback requirement. That's disingenuous and capricious. As stewards of Raleigh's responsible growth, this should be alarming to every one of you. There are many other things I could talk about, but I don't have time. This project will degrade Raleigh's first and successful plan unit development in Inman Park. Development at this stage will impact market and tax values. My, our community's solar rights and residential use sheds have been impacted with this plan. Cracktree, cracktree buffers will be lost. Please find this rezoning substantially inconsistent with surrounding uses. I yield my time.
The next speaker is Angie Brandt.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I did have slides I'm requesting to be shared. There we go. I'm speaking today on behalf of myself, my family, my neighbors and their families. And I want you to understand, this is our neighborhood. It's where our children learn to ride their bikes and drive their car. Next slide, please. Traffic is a nightmare. It's already been deemed that we need a light. There's an impending massive development across the street in the city growth center. Ms. Good failed to tell you that Leadmine Road is a two-lane road, not even half a mile from here. It is not a massive thoroughfare, as she described. I'm not sharing this photo for shock value. I'm telling you our present reality. This crash involved Prior Gibson's teenage driver. The developer is saying that the streets appear sufficient. Next slide. This is Philcrest Drive. It's a county road. It's like a long driveway. There are no shoulders, limited visibility. It's an oasis. It's a hidden gem in the city. This is the only way in and out of my neighborhood. Commuters come flying through here and other neighborhood streets to avoid congestion that's already there. The transit stop is in front of this house here on the upper left. The builder's property that they're talking about rezoning is on the upper right here. Next slide, please. This shows you what will remain post-development with the lots in question. This will be untouched. Would you let your children or grandchildren ride their bikes here? Would you feel safe walking to the transit stop? Would you walk your dog? I've invited you all to come walk with me. I've driven this road daily for 15 years, and I fervently dispute the claim that this is sufficient. Critical improvements are needed in this area. The traffic impact analysis, which I ask you all to review, has no specific conditions that have been offered to address the impact and that infrastructure improvements are necessary. So please, come take a walk with me and see what possibilities lie here, and please do not approve of this case.
The next speaker is Kevin Guard.
Yes, and I have some slides, and can we start with slide number two, please? Thank you. My name is Kevin Guard, and I am a Raleigh native and resident for over 48 years. I am also a 17-year resident of Inman Park, where I live with my family and neighbors. Today, I'd like to paint a picture for you of how the proposed six-story building would impact the residents of Inman Park. The depiction of a seven-story building shown here is according to information the applicant provided at the second neighborhood meeting. It illustrates how 30 to 40 residences of Inman Park along Wyson Court, Mentone Way, and Chandler Grove Court would have a direct view of the six-story building due to terrain, which forms a 50-foot-deep valley between Leadmine Road and Mentone Way. Future residential development to the east will clear more trees and expose additional residences of Inman Park to a view of the proposed six-story building. Please skip the next slide and go to slide four. One example of a six-, seven-story residential building view is provided by Marshall Park Apartments along Blue Ridge Road. Note, this is not beside a residential neighborhood. Next slide, please. Advance this. Thank you. This picture taken from 133 feet from the back of the building clearly illustrates how a seven-story, six- to seven-story building overwhelmingly dominates the view. It's rather monstrous and you cannot hide it. This is a similar view that the 30 to 40 residences of Inman Park would have if a six-story building was placed at the zoning site. This picture illustrates why the Raleigh Comprehensive Plan generally recommends residential mixed-use buildings beside neighborhoods be limited to four stories. That is why I oppose the zoning proposal as is. Thank you.
All right, the next speaker is Matthew Isley.
And also note, Mr. Isley gets an additional minute based on one of the previous speakers.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I am Matthew Isley, President of the Inman Park Community Association Board Directors. Inman Park has 252 homes and 232 apartments, or about 1,000 Raleigh residents, in one of the capital city's largest and best-planned developments. I'm here on behalf of our board to convey our strong unanimous opposition to Z5320. As I stated in the memo I emailed to you all on Friday, we in Inman Park do not oppose redevelopment of the subject property. Indeed, some of us welcome it. Nor do we oppose redevelopment for multifamily uses, which Inman Park itself features. But the proposed development is far too intense, too tall, too wide, and too disruptive to the neighborhoods that surround it. It's too much in the wrong place. In examining the various Raleigh Comprehensive Plan policies that apply to the proposed development, including office and residential mixed-use guidelines, nowhere could I find any support for a six- or seven-story building. To the contrary, numerous comp plan provisions, as cited in my memo to you on Friday and highlighted in the accompanying attachments, put the maximum allowed height on such a tract at four stories with adequate buffers and transitions. Unfortunately, the proposal before you would produce fundamental incompatibilities with the surrounding neighborhoods, creating sharp changes in the physical development pattern around it, which the comp plan forbids, instead of complementing the established character of the area as the comp plan requires. For many more verifiable details, please see the memo I emailed you on Friday with attachments highlighting the applicable comp plan policies. I'm asking each of you to take 10 minutes to review those policies yourselves and reach your own conclusions about this proposal's consistency with them. Before you vote on this case, I also would encourage you to drive to the site and walk the area. What might seem to make sense on two-dimensional paper or on a computer screen doesn't work on the ground. Please come and check it out for yourself. Perhaps most striking, the proposed development is twice as dense as the commercial development across Leadmine Road, which, unlike the subject property, is within a city growth center designated for high density. Anyone visiting the site can see that it would make no sense to build something twice as high as that next to existing single-family homes. We think it would make more sense for Raleigh to follow the general development pattern established more than two decades ago with a planned development that arose from the former Smith Estate, with residential development capped at three stories east of Leadmine and denser mixed uses to the west of Leadmine. Because the request before you does not meet key requirements of Raleigh's Comprehensive Plan, on behalf of Inman Park, respectfully, I urge you to deny it. Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you all for your comments.
There's one speaker left.
Okay, thank you.
Brad Deemer.
Hello, this is Brad. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, you're in good view.
That's great. All right, I'd like to begin. My name is Brad Deemer. I live on Hill Rock Drive. I wasn't included because of the proximity to the site in the first meeting. However, I was included in the second meeting. Before I get to go too crazy, I'd like you to do some very simple math. An acre is 43,000 square feet. An average apartment size is 1,000 square feet. With all of the buffers and with all of the different areas that have to have trees and everything around this site, that would equal, at 350 units, that would be 70 units per level, 70, 70,000 square feet units, when you only have room for 43 per acre. It's very interesting how you, for the entire package, it's very interesting how you could do that. The math does not work here. The second biggest issue, imagine if you will, that little tiny lane that was shown earlier with the little water in the middle of it. That lane, which I travel every single day for 22 years, has been impossible to make a left-hand turn onto Leadmine between 7:30 and 9 o'clock every single morning. Yet, we're going to reroute thousands of trips daily. So what's going to happen? That little tiny road is going to become a thoroughfare, and they're going to turn down our little lane called Memorial and finally get out to North Hills Drive. People, this is a terrible idea. This has no conscience behind it, and please refuse this. And dangerous, dangerous, dangerous for children.
Thank you for your comments, sir. It's come to my attention, there was a little bit of time left over for the applicant's side. Is that accurate, moderator?
Yes, Laura had 51 seconds left on the clock.
If the applicant would like to respond to any of the comments of the neighbors, they can go ahead and do so now.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Fox. Laura, again, I just wanted to respond to two things quickly. First, on the statement that we had inaccurately shown the neighbors that we were using 30 feet of buffer on Inman Park's property to satisfy our requirements. In a neighborhood meeting, simply what we had done was show them that there was 30 feet of protected buffer on their property to let them know that that was going to be in addition to what we would also be required to add on our property. So sorry for any confusion there. We weren't trying to mislead anyone. Secondly, with Philcrest, any frontage along Philcrest, this will be, this property will or to either improve or pay a fee and lieu to require, to improve our portion along Philcrest. With that, we're happy to discuss these comments further and come back in two weeks after we have a bit more time to discuss with the residents. Thank you.
So it seems like the applicant is offering to speak with the community again about some of these outstanding issues. Some of those identified are height, density, traffic, and buffering, specifically east-side buffering. What I'd like to do is allow the applicant time to do that. In order to do that, I believe we would have to take a vote to request an extension from council. So with that, I would make a motion that we get an extension of 45 days. Do I see a second? Commissioner Winters?
Second.
Thank you.
May I? A friendly amendment?
Yes, ma'am.
I would also like to see information on the stormwater report as it relates to Cracktree Creek, as well as a TIA.
Thank you for that. Okay, there's a motion on the floor to ask council for an extension and a second by Commissioner Winters. Do we need to do a roll call of the vote? No? Okay, with a show of hands, those in support of requesting an extension of 45 days? And it would appear that that is unanimous. Commissioner Lantman, did you have a question or a comment?
Yeah, in essence of time for the applicant, if we do have recommendations for additional concessions or conditions, would we want to give that to them now? So that way, when we do get it back in 40 days, hopefully, that they have something that they would have been working on between now and then.
Sure. So I made a preliminary list, and if you'd like to add to that, you can go ahead and do so. Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry. If you listed those, I apologize. I missed that.
That's okay. I talk really fast. You're fine. So reviewing those, some of the items that had been identified were the size, density, traffic, stormwater, and also buffering requirements, specifically east-side buffering. Commissioner Miller?
And for the next meeting, too, for staff, I saw in the staff report, it says that there were no inconsistent policies in the comp plan for this project, but I also read Matthew Isley's memo that lists a number of policies that he thought were inconsistent. I know that there have been some additional conditions perhaps addressed or added, and that there still may be additional moving forward, but just wanted to give staff a heads up. I might, I'll probably try to ask questions to reconcile those two views.
Commissioner Lantman?
And I just wanted, and maybe this is just a question, and Roberta, maybe this is something that you can just mention is, or for me, answer for me, is I think typically when we give conditions, we kind of give a little bit more specificity as to what we want to see. And this is, and I can agree with you, you've given like a list of these conditions that they should be looking at, but I don't know if they really have guidance as to what we would want to see. So are we just saying, go back on these issues, come up with something, and then, you know, we'll consider it? Or how would this? It just seems different than how we've done it. I think it's more specific.
Sure, that's an excellent question. I think the crux of it is that they've offered to speak to the community again. And so instead of me making a recommendation for what the community would like to see, I thought that they could get that information themselves and then supply conditions to address that. Does that seem adequate? Okay. All right, seeing head nods, I'm going to move forward to item F.4. This is case number Z5620, to request to rezone approximately five acres of land from residential 10 to residential mixed-use five-stories conditional use. Jason Harden will present on behalf of staff.
And I just want to note, I have a hard stop at 12:30. I have to go pick up my son.
Excellent. Does anybody else have a hard stop coming up shortly? Okay, you would be excused at 12:30.
Good afternoon. So this is the first time that you've seen this particular request, although I would note that there, last year was a rezoning request for the property immediately north of that, that you can see is owned RX seven CU. So this is another section of that overall Country Club Homes property that is now in consideration for our rezoning. So this is a little bit less than five acres currently, like the remainder of the Country Club Homes site, zoned residential 10. Request is to go to residential mixed-use five stories, and there's some conditions that address height, which I'll touch on. This is the first time you've seen it. The deadline will be April 26. So current zoning is on the site largely residential. There's a node of commercial uses and a city fire station at uses, and a city fire station at Fairview and Oberland Road to the south, and then various residential categories adjacent to that. Excellent. View from the air, and then this, you can see the existing buildings of Country Club Homes. And then again, the residential uses, Oberland Middle School, a little bit further to the north. Here's some street views. Top left is from the commercial area at Oberland and Fairview that's looking north, and then top right, another view, looking north on Oberland Road toward the site, and a couple of views coming from the south. There in the bottom left, that's in front of Oberland Middle School, formerly Daniels Middle School, and then looking into the site from Oberland Road. Next slide. So the conditions prohibiting outdoor entertainment and recreation uses, the building height is the subject of a few of these conditions, and I have a map slide that illustrates that as well. So height, and this is similar to the approach that was taken in the rezoning to the north, that was, if anybody remembers it by its number, Z one twenty. But both of them took the same approach of looking at limiting height directly along Oberland Road, so in this case, within forty feet, limiting it to three stories, except for the northern one hundred and fifty feet of this particular parcel that would allow four stories. Elsewhere in the site, and the zoning again is allowing five stories, but would be limited to four stories entirely above finished grade. So technically five stories, but that would include some stories that have some below-grade element to them. Limits the total number of units to one hundred and ninety, and any parking structures would be screened from view. Next slide. So this illustrates the height condition a little bit more, so the darker green is where the four stories would be permitted, and the lighter green is where three stories would be permitted along Oberland Road. Next slide. So in terms of the comparison, probably touched on, most of this would increase the, obviously, number of units and density from ten per acre in R-ten to a little bit less than forty per acre. Total of one hundred and ninety units would allow four thousand square feet of office and retail, that's part of that RX residential mixed-use district provision for property or neighborhood-serving retail. Setbacks would be unchanged with an apartment building type, it's a ten-to-fifty-five-foot build two, and then zero or six-foot side and rear setbacks. Terms of carbon emissions, this is an example of one where there's a pretty clear analysis. This is in a place, this would allow more residential density in a place that is more walkable and more transit served, so trips more likely to be not in cars, more likely to be short of car trips, and so less carbon is emitted here than it would be in another part of the city or region. Also allows smaller, more energy-efficient units. So pretty clearly allowing additional housing here is likely to bring down the city's per-capita carbon emissions. Next slide. Terms of affordability, similar adds to housing supply. It does not include any specifically designated subsidized units, but permits the housing types, townhouse and apartment, that are more, relatively more affordable than detached houses. And also, in terms of considering affordability in relation to transportation costs, which we should, is obviously within walking distance of transit. So again, the walkability and the transit presence here brings down those total costs. Next slide. In terms of future land use map, part of the site is designated for medium-density residential, and then a part of the southern part of the site is designated for neighborhood mixed-use. So in terms of uses and height, given the presence of frequent transit along this corridor, squarely consistent with those future land use map categories. Also, there's a transit emphasis corridor designation. It encourages a higher level of walkability for development along these corridors with higher levels of transit. So the apartment build-two or townhouse build-two would be consistent in creating that form that's more supportive of walkability along this corridor. So consistent, again. So overall, in the broader sense, consistent with the comprehensive plan and future land use map and urban form map, and then consistent with all the individual relevant policies on the next slide. So in addition to future land use map, concepts of compact development, corridor development, allowing more development on corridors that are served by transit, allowing more housing variety, greenhouse gas reduction that's tied to the carbon analysis, and then obviously allowing more housing supply, which brings down housing costs across the city and region. So that's all I have, and I'm happy to answer questions if there are.
Thank you. Next we'll hear from Michael Birch, representing the applicant. The applicant and all those in support have ten minutes to speak.
Good morning, Chair Fox. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, we can.
Great, good morning. Yeah, my name's Michael Birch with Longleaf Law Partners. Joining our team this morning is Gordon Grubb with Grubb Ventures, who will be speaking. And then we also have, as part of our team that's on the call, more in a kind of response to question posture, is Ann Stotter with Grubb Ventures, Jeff Weller, traffic engineer with Stan Tech, John Felton, architect with Klein Design, and David Brown, landscape architect with Withers and Ravenel. Just overview of our presentation, I'm going to turn it over to Gordon to provide some introductory comments, then I will step back in and go through our presentation. So at this point, if you could unmute Gordon, and it'd probably be helpful to put on slide six, if possible.
Okay, well, thank you for your service and thank you for hearing our case today. We have a great local, very established ownership team that includes Clancy and Thays, Williams Realty, and Grubb Ventures. Over many years, we have been instrumental in the development and construction of some of Raleigh's premier communities, including Gardens on Glenwood, the Oaks at Fallon Park, Carolinian Apartments, the Bellwood Single Family Homes, Williamsburg Court, cottages, and the Peace Project. So our group purchased this, the Country Club Homes, which owned approximately twenty-three and a half acres in two thousand and six, which was probably about the peak of the market. So since that time, we have spent fifteen years developing hundreds of plans for this project, so we are very excited to present this today. During that time, we did spend a considerable amount of time looking at the renovation and possibly keeping some of the units, we refer to the old phase was developed around nineteen forty and the newer phase was in nineteen fifty. But really, the infrastructure is terracotta plumbing with tree roots, and we were spending really over two hundred thousand dollars a year, just over above normal maintenance to keep the apartments going, and we just determined it just wasn't feasible to do that. So as I said, we're excited to present a plan, and the overall plan really offers just a vast array of housing choices. We have apartments, which is what this case is about, we have condominiums, townhomes, we have one of Raleigh's first cottage courts that we're very, very excited about, and we have single-family homes. And then, as Michael mentioned earlier, we have the CCRC Liberty has previously rezoned. So the goal here is that you could literally live through all of your life stages right here on this property. It's a great walkable neighborhood, we're on the transit corridor, and it's my understanding the CCRC already has well over three hundred deposits, and we've got over seventy-five names of folks that are interested in the other sale components. We are all very aware of affordable housing concerns in Raleigh. You're the city's appointee on the DHIC board. We, multiple members of our team have been on the Habitat Board rebuilding together and worked on the Raleigh Affordable Housing Bond. So we, we've really worked hard to assist our residents with their relocation. We've given, in most cases, they've had about two years' notice, but in all cases, we've given well over a year. We're offering them relocation fees, we're offering some free rent assistance, we don't require any notices to vacate, we immediately refund security deposits. And we've had a housing fair that I actually attended, where we did have twelve apartment communities in them, fairly close proximity, offering reduced fees and concessions, and we hope to have another housing fair soon to continue that goal of helping them. Another goal is that some of our smallest units, we hope we can make them at least attainable for teachers at Oberland Middle School or firefighters across the street. But regardless, this is really going to be more attainable for this Hayes Bar neighborhood because it's really consists of expensive homes and townhomes in the vicinity. So the property's going to be developed. Yeah, our backup option would probably be just doing expensive townhomes, so we really think the apartments give us that option and a more reasonably priced product for folks. We have really tried to develop a site plan that is very considerate of the neighbors and complements the neighborhood. We have single-family homes that are backing up to the St. Mary's Single Family Homes. And as Michael alluded to, we've really tried to step down to three stories on Oberland and then go up to four in the middle, which is still less than the CCRC, which is a five-story. With our design, we spend a lot of time on architecture, so we've got, it's mostly brick. As you know, the majority of apartments in Raleigh are hard-eat siding and they're merchant-built. Our goal is for a long-term ownership of this property, so the details are reported to us. And we have mostly brick construction on all sides. We have some direct entry units, which, so that it doesn't look like an apartment complex. We also plan extensive landscaping. Frank Liggett is working with us, and our commitment is that we're going to put more trees back on the property than we take out. And then also, we're going to be improving the infrastructure, making it safer by widening Oberland. There'll be a bike lane, the sidewalk will be set back from the street and bus stop. So at this point, I'll turn it back over to Michael. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Gordon. Again, this is Michael. So what you're looking at, you see the highlighted parcel there, that's the four-point-eight-acre piece that is subject to the rezoning. We thought it was important for you all to kind of understand how this piece fits into the overall redevelopment of the twenty-three acres. As Gordon mentioned, the senior congregated care facility is to the north across that new proposed street. We have a mix of townhomes that are shown, along with a double-loaded street of single-family that backs up to the single-family on St. Mary's. This kind of future development area there, that is for the cottage court, as well as down at the south at Fairview, that area is for kind of a condo brownstone-style development. So as Gordon mentioned, this is really an opportunity to provide full lifecycle, you know, living opportunities, as well as a variety of housing options, both in terms of for-sale and for-rent, but also, you know, size, et cetera. If you could, please move it ahead, two slides, and just wanted to provide just a color, kind of rendering of the full site plan. I will say that this subdivision plan is in review with the city. We're about to submit for our third round of review. Again, that was to create these parcels. And if you could, we did want to show you, as Gordon mentioned, a couple of the perspectives of the proposed apartments. So if you could go to the next slide. And one more. Again, this is kind of looking north along Oberland Road, that all brick that Gordon mentioned. If you could go to the next slide. Again, this shows the three stories, but as you're headed north, Oberland Road kind of goes downhill a little bit, and that is where we pick up this quote-unquote fourth-story there, kind of on the left side of the page. The plan is, is to, for it actually to be three stories, but again, from a height standpoint, we needed to accommodate that. If you can go back to the site plan, so I think maybe two slides. Just wanted to note, we do have a condition in this deck right here, we, I know that's been a hot topic at council, it's also been discussed with you all as part of a few cases. We have a condition requiring that deck to be fully screened from view. As you can see, it's kind of deck wrapped there. And I want to note that really the only five-story location is in that interior courtyard, so it will appear four stories kind of all the way around, except for where it's three stories along Oberland Road. Just wanted to note that. If you could, go ahead a couple of slides until you reach the conclusion page. One more slide, please, and then I'll just, again, end with, consistent with the future land use map and urban form map, all the applicable comp plan policies, and you see the reasons there why we think it's reasonable and in the public interest, and we're here to answer any questions the commission may have.
Thank you for that presentation. I do not believe any members of the public are here to speak on this item. Moderator, can you correct me if that's incorrect?
You're correct.
Okay. So seeing that, I'm going to open it up to questions from commissioners. Commissioner Bennett?
Thank you. I have a question about traffic. I know this didn't require a TIA, but one of the emails that, or maybe the only email we received about this one, mentioned something about the piecemeal analysis that was done, and I just wanted transportation staff to have an opportunity to address that. Do the impacts shown for traffic reflect the entire development and build-out? Were we just seeing this apartment, this parcel developed?
Is someone from staff available?
Yes, hi. Sorry, it took a minute to unmute. This is Ann Conlin in transportation planning. The traffic numbers that you saw were only for the piece of this that is being, that is being rezoned, that is proposed to be rezoned. So you're correct, but when you saw that site plan that covered the entire site, we did not look at traffic for the entire site because the basis for a trigger of a TIA at rezoning is only for the portion that is being.
And Commissioner Bennett, this is Michael Birch, I can also touch on that. So as Ann just mentioned, that's correct, that what's in your staff report takes into account only the rezoning area. But when you take into account the senior housing community, that's about nineteen additional trips in the AM, fourteen additional trips in the PM, then the balance of the site is being developed under current R-ten zoning. And so you still have that kind of, you know, just over one additional car per minute in the peak hours. And I want to also note that that is very conservative because those kind of trip generation numbers do not take into account any of your kind of standard reductions for walkability or access to transit. So that's kind of assuming all trips are vehicle trips. And also, while we are, you know, we're not saying that we're not adding any traffic, but while we are adding some vehicle trips, I also want to note that for the full length of this property, both on Oberland and Fairview, we will be, along Oberland, adding additional pavement to provide for the full street section, so that will include a dedicated bike lane. We're also providing the city's streetscape, which is six-foot grass strip planted along the six-foot-wide sidewalk, which is wider than the one out there today. So we think we're enhancing, you know, vehicular safety, pedestrian and bike safety with the required. required improvements.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so in our staff report, there are a number of items listed for consistency with the comprehensive plan. No policies were identified showing inconsistencies at this point. We do have the one question via email related to traffic, which I believe was just addressed. I have one question for the applicant. I did note in the staff report and in the summary of your meetings, there was a question about what would happen to the people who are currently living, and what efforts you had made so far. Was wondering if you could speak to that just for a second.
Yes, so this is Michael Birch again. Gordon, as a part of this kind of initial presentation, touched on a number of things that have been kind of going on, you know, really for two years, giving, giving notice. And I'm happy to kind of restate those, or if Gordon is available, if you can kind of restate, but that included a housing fair where there were 12 communities within the, you know, nearby area that were providing reduced rent options. There was also moving assistance funds provided by the owner, as well as reduced rent, immediate return of security deposit, no penalty for terminating their leases, and again, that very much advanced, advanced notice.
Okay. Do any other commissioners have questions or comments for staff or the applicant? At that point, I'd actually, Commissioner McIntosh?
Oh, I just wanted to express appreciation to the developer for their, their attention to transitions to the existing neighborhood, and stepping down the massing of the buildings to blend in with the existing residential area.
Commissioner Winters?
Thank you. I'd also like to show appreciation to the developer for the sensitivity to moving or having, individuals having to transition and trying to make it as easy as possible with the subsidies that they are providing, and even the housing fair within their established community. It, it is refreshing, and it also shows that it can be done, and I thank you for doing it, and you've set a standard for other developers when it comes to having to rehouse, individuals having to be rehoused. So thank you.
Thank you for that. With that, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to approve Z5620 as it is reasonable and in the public interest and consistent with the comprehensive plan, specifically policies related to compact development, housing variety, and zoning for housing. And I'm going to not so subtly note that some projects move through more quickly when additional detail is provided at the onset. Commissioner Bennett?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any additional discussion on the merits of the motion? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to ask Shanitha for a roll call of the votes.
Commissioner Bennett, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair Fox?
Aye.
Commissioner Hicks?
Aye.
Commissioner Lamplin?
Aye.
Commissioner McIntosh?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Haver?
Aye.
And Commissioner Winters?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously. Thank you all for bearing with me. I'm going to acknowledge that it's really late, but if we can power through, we can get through the next few things, which, which should go very, very quickly. Okay. Next is approval of the minutes. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes. Commissioner Bennett?
Before we do that, I just had a couple of corrections.
Go ahead.
On page four, at the bottom, agenda item E1Z3420 Lewisburg Road, the first sentence under that says this case is located at 314 Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. I think that might have been a cut and paste thing. And then on page seven, at the bottom, could we please add my question to the applicant if he would be, would consider accommodating Ms. Morales in the new development? And that's all I have.
Excellent. With those technical amendments, then I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes. Do I have a second? Commissioner Bennett?
Second.
Excellent, thank you. Shanitha, can I do a roll call of the individual votes?
Commissioner Bennett, how do you vote?
I, I think Mr. York was trying to say something.
You can just do a showing of hands.
Okay, showing of hands to approve the minutes with the adjustments made to page four and page seven. I'm seeing all of the hands, the motion passes unanimously. Now on to report of the chairperson. Thank you all for bearing with me as we struggle through a very long meeting and a very long agenda. Thank you, I appreciate the silence and applause. I, I'm really excited to be here, and hopefully I will understand how to move forward a little bit more quickly in upcoming agendas. It's, it's really an honor to, to be in a position of public service. Anyway, one thing I wanted to mention is I recommend that we have a retreat, and we're going to work with staff to find a date to do that and to talk about, solicit your ideas for what topics we could discuss at a retreat. And some of those might be items that we see repeatedly that may or may not have come up today. Also, staff recently sent an email requesting a liaison for the Stormwater Management Advisory Commission. No one's volunteered for that position yet, and I would like to ask that everyone consider this role, and it's an important point of connection to share information with another board. You don't need to go ahead and nominate yourself today, but if you want to, if you want to take a look at that email and then respond to that, that would be great. Commissioner O'Haver, your chuckle lets me know that perhaps you're considering it. Additionally, I've talked with staff, and we are going to schedule an additional regular planning commission meeting for Tuesday, March 30th at nine to continue to move through the high volume of cases. Now on to report of the members. Does anyone have a report? Commissioner O'Haver?
Thank you Chair Fox, great job today to serve under you and looking forward to working with Commissioner Winters at Committee of the Whole. So, great job. We don't need to deal with it now, it's late, but sort of a follow-up, I was wondering too, Ms. Bennett mentioned Ms. Morales on the Bloodworth, but I think there were some other issues that the city had on identifying that, and I'm just wondering if Mr. Bowers in his next report could follow up with what we're doing on that to support folks in that situation, so.
Sure.
All right, thank you Ken. Go ahead, Commissioner Bennett?
Thank you. I promise I'll be brief. Would like to, first of all, commend you. I thought you handled the meeting very well, I'm looking forward to your leadership, and I'm also looking forward to Vice Chair Winters leading the Committee of the Whole. I just feel compelled to state for the record that my yes vote to, to move the street naming to council without a recommendation was because of the, I guess, muddiness around having a procedure in place for street names. I feel, as outspoken as I am about these issues, I need to be on record saying it was not my opposition to renaming the street. I just want to make sure there is a standardized process in place to address some of the issues that we had discussed around that item.
Thank you for that. Any other reports from commission members? All right, seeing none, I'm going to move on to the report of the deputy planning director.
Hi, in the interest of time, I'll just refer you to the written report. You did get your time extension on Z5020, which you used today to discuss the case, so rest of it's just routine updates from council on the scheduling of public hearing items. I would like to say, though, I think this is Tika's last meeting, and recognize her long service on the planning commission, and the great job that she has done for all of her three terms here, so it's been great to work with you, and hopefully we'll be seeing you around in other venues.
Thank you very much. It's been my pleasure and my honor to serve, and just wanted to say what a great job Chairman Fox did today.
Those are, those were big boots to fill. Commissioner McIntosh?
I just wanted to express my gratitude for Tika Hicks' service on the planning commission, especially for your focus on gratitude for good design, and your eloquence and positive feedback to applicants whose work is sensitive to its context. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Tika. Excellent, it's going to be difficult to be so eloquent on the fly as you did on so many occasions. One thing I did want to foreshadow, I believe it's in the report in our backup material, there's a preview of a rezoning request for Centennial, which the applicants are finalizing for a March submittal to the planning commission, so this is Centennial Campus, this is NC State rezoning with the campus master plan. Just wanted to foreshadow that, please take a look at it, that item will take a fair amount of time to move through. Commissioner Bennett?
A quick question, I'm sorry, I hadn't meant to ask this. Chair Fox, will you be attending the council meetings where the planning commission reports are given?
Yeah, it's my intent to attend those and to be able to give a report, which is why I asked on some occasions today. I'm trying to figure out the details of that, because as I understand it, boards and commission members have to go in person, it's not virtual, their attendance at the council meeting, so I am working through the details and my comfort level of that.
Okay, I, I understand. And, and Ken, it's, it's not that you don't do a fantastic job, I just, I've noted at some of the, several of the council meetings, they're asking, well, we, why did the planning commission do this, or why did they decide that, or this seems inconsistent with that, and it, it just, it certainly would be beneficial if the chair could answer those questions, but I understand that you have to be in person, that you have to think that, that through, so, thank you.
One compromise we've talked about is providing written comment, which I might go ahead and do, and it means I would have to turn that around in about 24 hours to get it on the agenda, which I would do my best to do. It's my intent to show up to the next meeting in person and to feel out how I, how I would like to proceed with that at future meetings.
And, and let me just say, if, if I feel like it's clear in the record and the minutes as to why dissenting votes were, were taken, I will represent that, but I will not speculate on people's motives, and so to the extent that folks voting against a, a motion, you know, state clearly for the record the reason for their vote, I'm happy to represent that to city council, it's just when, when maybe I'm not 100% sure what the reasoning is, I don't like to speculate or, or guess as to what folks' true thinking was, I would rather that to be reflected in the record.
So what I'm going to, I'm going to attempt to do, and commissioners, please hold me accountable, is when there are dissenting votes, to circle back afterwards to make sure it is on the record, to facilitate that process, so please hold me to that. With that, I'm going to say we can adjourn the meeting, we have no other items to discuss. All right, excellent, thank you everybody.